Okay, we are live on Facebook and live on Zoom.
All right, given that it is at the hour six o'clock, we will begin the regular meeting of the Class and School Committee on Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I will call the meeting to order and start with a roll call. So order and Mr. Kenny.
Present.
Mr. Carr.
Present.
Ms. Leskey.
Present.
Ms. McCullough.
Present.
And I, Mr. Dial, am here. We have a unanimous attendance. I will now stand for the pledge, please. The bludgeons to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic which stands for my nation, in this world with liberty and justice for all. So we have a packed agenda tonight. We have a few invited guests and we have some very heavy substance to address with kicking off the actual process of our superintendent search. At the last meeting, our superintendent has accepted the position at the Marshfield Above Schools. Congratulations again, Dr. Sullivan. Again, we will miss you and we will commence the search to find your successor. So that's what much of our agenda will be about today. But we still have the day-to-day business of running the schools and day-to-day business of being a school committee. So with that, I'll skip over to item B for public comment. See if we have any public comments. As people will recall from other meetings, public comment is a section of agenda. If you have comments about stuff that's not on the agenda, raise it here. Or if you're going to comment about something that's on the agenda, you can let us know so we come back to you. So with that, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any comments at this time.
Excellent. So we'll move on from public comments to invited guests. So our first invited guest today is the Superintendent School Advisory Council Representative, Mr. Charlie.
Charlie, welcome.
Thank you, having me back. It's always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you for having me back.
So I just wanted to say before I got started that at any time throughout my presentation, like, please feel free to jump in and like ask me questions. Like, I know that's what I'm here for. So if I tend to go on a little bit, just cut me off and jump in and ask a question or a comment or anything like that. So I guess I'm gonna start off with kind of the school atmosphere as I usually do. So I think this usually kind of seems to work out where I seem to present here before the quarter ends, for whatever reason. So we have semester one or quarter two, which is ending at the end of January. And with this, we have a final schedule too. And I'm not quite exactly sure on the history of this, but I think at least for my time in high school, this is the first time that I can remember having a real final schedule or a midterm schedule for the end of the semester. I think this is good because it kind of gives us something to build up to. You know, sometimes it's, oh, well, it was nice the past few years to not kind of have them. I think it kind of lends some legitimacy to the classes and also for like, you know, some of the AP classes that I'm taking, we have the end of year exam in May. And so kind of having this midterm is actually, well, a lot of studying and work. It's a good check-in to kind of see where you're at in the year and maybe where you could brush up and things like that. So those are my thoughts about the finals or midterms. We also had just fun, the pickleball tournament, which happened last week. My partner, Aiman, and I actually ended up winning it.
Well, you're a tennis pro champ.
Thank you. But that was good and it's always nice to see everyone come out for that, all the different grades. I think like, I've always mentioned this, but having these sort of like ping pong tournament, pickleball, having just all the grades come together at a time in the winter when it gets dark early and people want to just kind of punker. And I think it's a nice kind of chance for everyone to get together. And I've met a lot of people who I would never have met before at these tournaments. And so it's kind of just a fun way to get together. And then some other business for the senior class specifically is the Credit for Life Fair. And that's coming up, which is pretty exciting. We had a senior class meeting a few days back about that during utility. And this is basically just a, I'm not entirely sure all the details, but it's a chance for seniors, I would have gathered, to kind of work through some of the real-world adult business things like keeping a budget and sort of planning of like your expenses and your expenditures and kind of just how that whole process works. And so they actually had us fill out a form before it happened for a potential career that we'd want to do. And so I believe we're gonna go on the Credit for Life Fair and kind of act as that role and kind of play out different scenarios and go to different tables with parent volunteers about budgeting and like maybe if you want to take a trip somewhere, maybe you have to have a smaller house, like kind of just budgeting stuff like that, which should be exciting. I remember hearing so many fun stories about it last year from the seniors. And so I'm really excited for that.
Another thing, Charlie, with that is the panelists are fabulous. Last year's panelists were connected to Cohasset in various ways and were at so many different blocks of occupations. They kind of wrote their stories. That was, I think, very, very powerful. The students got a lot of it. So I think they'll enjoy that part.
Yeah, definitely. One other thing on that survey where it asked us for our profession, was it asked us if the seniors wanted any sort of other events or ideas for kind of senior spring things? And I, for one, was really excited to see that one of the options was a Mr. Dykes Dance Party. Because going way back, you know, all my fellow classmates who've been here since kindergarten, that was one of the biggest fun things.
He is such a great guy. So positive and really like an institution, I'd say.
Yeah, so that would be, I voted for that. I told all my friends to vote for that. So I'm hoping we can do that. But
That if the parents show up to the senior one and take it after their students as well.
It'd be welcome. I know that. That's great.
And then moving on, just some quick athletic highlights. I think the winter sports are doing pretty well. I know I heard a few, maybe there were, I guess, a little bit of complaints today about the wrestling team who had to go to Sandwich for a meet, but hopefully they'll do well and I wish them luck. I'm actually looking forward to, on Saturday, the twentieth this month, I'm actually gonna help out at the home wrestling tournament here, working one of the score tables. And I've never actually watched a wrestling match before, so curious to see how that goes. And then moving on, I had some club highlights here. So some of the clubs that I'm on are Debate Team and Medical Club. And so with Debate, the season's in full swing. I kind of wanted to just touch on it a little bit. I think Debate is like one of the best clubs we offer here at the school. It's like, not only is it just a fun time, but you really learn so many important life skills and like, you really have to think under pressure and you have these judges who you've never seen before and opponents you've never seen before. And I really enjoy kind of like, it's a little bit like this actually, where they give you the floor and you have to talk and make an argument on the fly. And so I really like Debate Team. And then Medical Club too. We have a meeting tomorrow during utility where we're gonna go over, I think, body systems and diseases, which is Mr. Savage does that, which is awesome. He's a great teacher. And that actually, I just thought of, kind of speaks to the value of utility overall, because it's not only a time for you to see teachers, but to have these clubs. While it's short, it's like a great opportunity to meet and it's not too much of a commitment, which is good. And then moving on here, I had an arts update. So I was just talking with Miss A and Mrs. Moriarty earlier today. We have the acapella and the jazz band are in full swing, which is good. The band and chorus are preparing to perform at the Senior Center soon, which is exciting. But they're also preparing for the March All Schools Concert with Chorus and Band. And then my personal favorite, Mindful Mornings. I can't remember if I mentioned this last time.
I think you did, Mrs. Burrows.
Yes. And that's just awesome. We actually had that today at ten o'clock instead of eight o'clock.
Yeah, sure.
It was, it was good. That's just a nice chance to kind of take it easy and have a few mindful breaths with some friends. That's fun. And then I thought I'd talk a little bit about our work on the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. We had a really nice meeting yesterday where we met with Mr. Cordon, the new Food Services Director.
Got postponed a couple of times, so it was nice to do it.
It was definitely nice to meet him because I've seen him wandering around the cafeteria and stuff. And I just wanted to say that his passion for food services is like obvious. It was like, to me, it just blew me away. Like, he really loves what he does. And something else that was of note is that not just like the food itself was the focus, but he was talking about from his experience in Plymouth with Subworld, his restaurant, kind of the whole concept of like the customer service and the experience of getting the food as well. You know, it's not just about going and getting your food and having time with your friends, but kind of the whole experience of how it played out and just kind of that experience that he had with the restaurant, I think, will be invaluable to our school. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what he can do with that. I liked his metaphor. He was saying we have to crawl, then walk, then run. So I'm looking forward to what happens with that. Few final things, an NHS update. So we were building up a big part of National Honor Society's induction ceremony in December. So after that happened, it's kind of, as Mr. Turner was calling it, kind of a post-induction slowdown. There's not too much happening right now, but members are hard at work chipping away at their service or their individual service project, which is good. Lots of form signing too. As an officer, I'm responsible for signing our own service forms. So I have a lot of people doing that, which is good. And then one last thing I had here before I opened it up for any other questions or anything was, I was thinking about what I could kind of report on about like the facilities, because I remember last year I talked about the lights and then those got fixed, which was good. But I wanted to touch on classroom temperature, which I know has been an issue in the past. And that's actually, keep your reports tonight. It's been really good, like in the past few months. And to be honest, I haven't even noticed it.
You know, they upgraded the switches.
Really?
Yeah. And so it's a lot easier to regulate now. Doesn't mean we do have problems. We can't cool the rooms like we'd like to. And I know this committee's talked about that with a lot of passion, but I'm glad you're seeing more even regulation because that's due to the upgrades.
Yeah, that's awesome to hear. I know also, like, I think they probably don't get enough credit, but the maintenance staff here, like I know, Mrs. Humphrey in the stats class, there was an issue, I think, with her radiator in the math hallway. And there were people working on it in class and they came in and they fixed it up. And that was just, they were really friendly and they were nice. And so that was
They are.
That was really encouraging to see. And so that was all I have. But do any questions or comments? That'll be good.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Kenny, questions, comments?
Great job, great presentation. I'm glad to see that. We actually missed the meeting yesterday. Student Food Services.
Sorry, that thing was, scared the Swiss to pants.
Yeah, so I was glad to see that. I'm glad to see that you get that to the community, asking kids what they see. So good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr.
So maybe for your next meeting, first of all, great job as well as Charlie. So my daughter graduated last year. She's home for the first holidays. It is wall-to-wall kids in my house, so all day, all the time. A funny question came up and said, you know, I know when you graduate from class at high school, there are alumni things, but it generally doesn't happen for a while after you graduate. So I'm curious if maybe one of your next presentations, if this has any thoughts, is there something we might consider for recent graduates that can be back?
Yeah.
After, you know, after just graduating, other than they all end up with cars, but, which is great. But, you know, it's just sort of there, like, is there stuff that the school does? And I said, you know what? I actually don't know the answer, but Charlie's gonna come in and I'll ask Charlie if they'll do it.
That's, that's great. Yeah. And that's something we can talk to Mr. Scott about.
Yeah.
Did see a nice moment today when we saw a former student who is a recent grad in college, working with Miss McPhillips as part of her student teaching hours.
That's wonderful.
Really lovely.
Who taught her when she was in first grade. Now she's teaching her how to be a teacher.
Yeah, that was nice. But I know what you're talking about. More full way to.
Something. I don't know what the answer to that is, but it'd be good to ask the people that it affects the most.
It's a somewhat untapped resource.
I definitely haven't heard much about that, so that's definitely an opportunity.
Yep.
I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Ms. Leskey.
Thank you, Charlie. Just always like a wonderfully thorough look at, peek into the life of a student. And I just, I guess I just had a thought, as you were thinking about other seminars that seniors might like to have. I know Roxbury Latin School, which is in Boston, All Boy School in Boston, does a day or two around life skills. Like, you learn how to fry an egg and change a tire and all of these other, like, just sort of critical life skills that you may, may or may not learn before you walk into the world.
Yeah.
And so that might be an interesting sort of brainstorm of the teachers and what they think that you all might need to know as, you know, humans about to head off and be being way more independent than usual.
Yeah, definitely. I remember in our meeting yesterday, someone mentioned how there's not a ton of home ec in Cohasset. So definitely, there's a need for that, I think. Thank you, Leskey.
Ms. McCullough.
I'm just curious, Charlie, you mentioned that you filled out a form.
Yeah.
For the life. Very colorful seminar. And you, and part of that, as part of that, you indicated what you'd like to do for, I'm just curious. I mean, obviously, you probably don't think this right now, sitting here as the senior most student in the school right now, but you are extremely young, so maybe early to ask, but I'm just curious what vocation you're interested in. You are interested in.
Yeah. I think, I guess the honest answer is I don't really know.
Good answer.
But I think I definitely always gravitated towards like more math, science. So I think, I've been thinking in the past few months, maybe like biochemistry is a subject I really like a lot. So it's maybe something in the medical field, which is, hence Medical Club, but other than that, I'm not really sure.
And I was just curious what your thoughts were. Early jump during your life.
That's a great endeavor.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. McCullough. Charlie, excellent presentation as always. Thank you. I have no questions other than compliments. So once again, nice job. And please keep us well informed as to what's going on in the future and look forward to your future presentations.
Will do.
Thank you, Charlie. Excellent.
Thanks so much.
Have a great night. Take care. Thank you.
So that concludes our Student Advisory Council Report. And now we're going to move on to an agenda item on the superintendent search process. Just a quick introduction to this item. Our superintendent is leaving. You're gonna hear that a lot this meeting. And one element of the process is a decision at the committee level of whether or not to engage a search consult. The process for a search for a superintendent can be long, hard, and there are experts out there who can guide us to the process. It's not a requirement, so it's something that the committee will deliberate on. But I have invited two organizations who do search, helps with search processes, MASC and NESD. And they're both here to present to us on the process. And I believe, Jim? Yes, excellent. So Jim Hardy from MASC will be first giving us, MASC has a little bit of dual ball, just so you know, it's an association of school committees, but they also do a private help with searches. So there's a consultant aspect as well. So Jim has a little bit of a dual hat on, so keep that in mind, that some of this is in his capacity as a member of our organization, some is in his capacity as someone who could help us. We could retain him to help us with the search process. So Jim, if you're ready, I'll turn it over to you, if that's all right.
Jim, will we have you pass this up?
I'll be happy to. Just, just pull it on that way.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
That way.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Good to be here, huh? Yep, thank you. So Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, the new membership, the first part of my presentation is gonna be on the MASC field director side per se, in that I'll talk a little bit about some of the key challenges that a superintendent search entails and some of the key decisions that you're gonna have to make as you move through the process. And then I'll flip to what we can offer you as far as, you know, contract services for the purposes of superintendent search. So this first packet that I have really kind of outlines the nuts and bolts of conducting a superintendent search and the many decisions you have to make along the way for that process. One of the first things that you'll need to do is assess what you're looking for. Might, you know, some may suggest, you know, Pat Squared, the second version, or, you know, something different. But no search will be successful unless you know what you're looking for in candidates. And you articulate that to you. If you have a search committee, you make sure they're on the same page with you, that if you're looking for someone who's got this skill, this skill, this skill, and this skill, that gets applied to every aspect of the search, from the paper screening to the interviews, to the question development, and to the final decision-making. So developing that profile at the very beginning is really a critical piece that drives the rest of the process. There are a couple of different ways you can do that. One is through we offer, and this would be whether you hire us or not, we would offer you an online survey where people could participate. We typically get a hundred times more people participate in a survey than we ever get in-person focus groups. Those are generally eight, 10, 12 people that come to a focus group where the survey I did for Marshfield, there were 700 people who participated in that online survey. So by comparing 150 people versus 700 people and breaking it down amongst, you know, parents, employees, students, the whole bit. The beauty of doing it electronically is that I can separate out the responses and you find out what the key priorities for parents are, what the key responsibilities for employees are, what the key response, what the key challenges the students feel would apply. So you could take all of that into consideration from all those different perspectives. So once you've developed the profile, in conjunction with that, you can, you know, you have to advertise a position. There's a lot of different ways of doing that. Some are, you could probably do in-kind surveys, website postings, electronic notice notifications. There's paid advertising if you choose to do that. Publication called Education Week. You can also use School Spring if you're, if you use School Spring for your regular positions. Then, you know, I'm not a big fan of spending money on the Boston Globe. In 28 years of doing superintendent searches, I've never had a candidate tell me they only saw the vacancy in the Globe. It's always the Globe and something else or something else in the Globe. It's always multiple notifications. And I picked the Globe. It could have been the Herald, it could have been any other paid advertising. Simply because of the expense associated with that, that money can be used toward other, other needs. The other consideration you have to take into fact is the timeline. You know, July one is not that far away. So you have a couple of different options going forward. That's one of the decisions that you'll have to make. Do we start a search right now? And not rush it, but move at an expedited pace. Or do we look, say, all right, why don't we bring an interim in and then do a search? Yeah, take our time and do it the way we want to do it. Or if you have, you know, internal candidate or internal person who certified to be a licensed, licensed to be a superintendent, you can put that person in a position for a period of time until you feel comfortable putting the search out there. Either one of those works. It's just a matter of what do you feel as a committee, how you want to proceed and what timeline you want to put forward. The other consideration going forward would be the makeup of a search committee if you choose to use a search committee. One of the advantages of a search committee is that you can get through two steps of the process while maintaining confidentiality. The Attorney General does not allow school committees to serve as the search committee. In fact, the search committee can't include a quorum of the school committee and the search committee can't be made up of as a majority of school committee members. So having a search committee allows you to maintain confidentiality, which more candidates will apply if they know that their name will remain confidential until such time that their name is finalized. That makes a big difference. So, you know, what's the makeup of the search committee gonna be? Which groups do you want represented? And then how are you gonna choose the representatives from each of those groups? More committees nowadays are actually choosing the representatives from the different group. People will submit a letter of interest, much like any other advisory committee in town. This letter of interest goes in and then there, you would appoint them to that, to the position of the superintendent of search committee. So the other component is what do you include in your advertising? Developing some sort of informational brochure. Doesn't mean you have to print a bunch of them, but it can all be done electronically and posted electronically. But what are you gonna use to attract somebody to, that looks interesting. I might explore that or I might put my application into Cohasset. What's gonna draw your attention? What are the things that you are proud of? What do you promote? What do you celebrate? And including in that is what you're looking for. And what are the minimum standards you're willing to accept? Does this person need to have been a classroom teacher? Do they need to have been a building administrator? Do they need to have been central office? It's different saying it's required versus desired. And at this part of the stage, do you want to go fishing with a net or a pole? You cast that widest, widest net you can get and then you narrow it down from when you get the overall pool. But as you get closer to the end, your focus becomes a little much more narrower and directed at what specifically you're looking for in a candidate. The other component would be if you chose to not bring in a consultant, who would be the person in charge of accepting applications, reviewing the applications? That would be like a clerical responsibility. Who's gonna, who's gonna double-check to make sure they're all complete? Send a notification back to the candidate that, yes, we've received your application and it is complete, or we've received it, but we're missing, you're missing something in the application packet. What's going to be part of the application packet? Standard, whatever application form you currently use for any position in the district, or you make up one specific for this. That's typically what we do. Would be how many letters of reference do you want and how old will you allow them to be? Do you want them no older than three years or no older than one year, however where you work that? Evidence of the highest degree that they've earned, whether it be transcripts and/or a diploma. You can always, if someone progresses through that and you want more evidence of that, you can, or what their coursework was, you can always request transcripts later down, later down the road. Some sort of personal statement. Why do they think they'd be a good fit for Cohasset? That will give you an indication of, have they done any research into Cohasset? Have they looked at any of your data? Is their personal statement specific or they just changed the name of the district and submitted it from another one? And you could tell the difference. And that's pretty much it. So if you, if that's what you want as an application packet, whoever's responsible for collecting them has to ensure that all those pieces are there. Other decisions along the way, as far as even posting the ads, is are you gonna include a salary range? Are you gonna put in what the contract specifications might be? Now that the trend right now is, you know, salary commensurate with experience. It's great. May attract more people, but the person you end up ultimately liking, their salary may be currently more than you're paying now and they may value their experience more than you value their experience. And if you really don't want this to break down at the end, sometimes putting a salary range in there clarifies things, because, you know, that's what it was. You applied, you know what the salary was. Maybe a $10,000 range between low and high might be, might be the way to go. But that's one of the, one of those discussion items you would have in going forward. The, the other thing would be, you know, what experience do you want this person to have? We talked a little bit about that. And then what other skill set over and above that is communication. Good, strong communication skills. What do you want them to have already done? Meaning, another way of looking at that is what can you not afford on-the-job training with here? You want them to already have experience in a particular area. I don't know if you're doing any building projects right now, but if you were in the middle of one, maybe you want someone who's closed out a project. He's familiar with punch lists, the final audit with MSBA, all that stuff. I don't know that. You would. So those are the type of things we make this specific to your district. Then ultimately, you have to put timeline together. On the last page of this document, I just kind of put a draft together based off of your meeting schedules. Trying to tie some of the decisions you'd have to make with meetings you already have posted. That doesn't mean you may not have to throw in a special meeting every now and again, just to make something happen, or if you wanted to accelerate the timeline a little bit more. I was just trying to match it up with your current meeting schedule in going forward. But, you know, the basic premise is when do you, when do you start and when do you want the person to be here? If July one is your targeted start date, you kind of build backwards from your timeline. On average, administrator contracts contain anywhere between 45 and 90-day notice clauses, the district that they're leaving. So that means they have to be signed under contract before they're gonna give the notice to the district they're leaving. You may need to worry about a bridge, short for a short bridge. If somebody's got a 60-day notice clause and by the time you reach a contract and approve it, you're 50 days out. So there might be a 10-day period where you've got to bridge something. If somebody else in the district has a license, you can put that person into the 10 days until it can start. But that's just something that we plan for once we know what the timeline is going to be. And it's hard to say what the notice is clause is gonna be, because I don't know who the candidates would be. So until you have identified the finalist, that's when you say, all right, what kind of notice clause do you have? What kind of notice clause do you have? What kind of notice? Not that that should be a factor in your decision, because ultimately you should hire the best person you think is the best fit for Cohasset. But it would be a factor as far as, once you reach that decision and you reach a contract agreement. If it, if it's going to extend past July one. What's the plan then? So making sure that, oh, wait a minute. You know, June 30th, we don't have a superintendent. What do we do? We don't want to be in that position. You want to have a plan to cover that bridge if you need it. And we don't, like I said, I don't know, I wouldn't be able to predict that because I don't know who the candidates would be at this point. So I just wanted to throw that out there. There's a lot more information in here. I didn't want to read the document to you, but if, if there's any questions on this part of it?
Thank you. I, I certainly appreciate. That and, and giving us the, the space to read the document ourselves and getting the high, high points. I will turn it over to the committee to see if there are any questions on the committee. Hope just to be open for them. Questions?
Thank you for your presentation. This is incredibly helpful. I had sort of three things maybe you could touch on. One, I'd like to understand a little bit about your organization's fee structure.
Good.
Second one is if we were to hire you, would you be the search consultant or is there someone else?
Me.
Okay. And then. I never know about consistency and checking references and stuff. Could you talk to us a little bit about your methodology about how you check references?
Sure. So we're going to get more into the metabolism proposal part of it. So I'm going to hand that out. So you have that.
And before we do that, any, any other questions on this general process, the overview? So we'll, we'll kind of shift gears into the.
And if, and if something comes up while I'm still here, I'm going to have to answer any part of these questions. So I'm going to answer these three questions first and then I'll get into the details of the proposal. Fee structure for a superintendent search is $1,500. It's a flat fee. You don't calculate expenses anymore. It's just built into that one number. At the end, it's not billed until you've signed a contract. With a candidate. If you come to the end of the day and you don't reach a contract agreement, you feel that you have to step it over again. We are here and it's no more fee. It's the same fee. It's not double fee. So it's, it's 11,500 until you reach an agreement with somebody. If that takes two go-arounds, so be it. That's our commitment to you. As far as the lead consultant, it would be me. Cohasset falls within the geographic territory that I'm responsible for, which is Southeastern Massachusetts, the Cape of the Islands. I added it up. This would be my 101st superintendent search since I started in 1996. Yes, that's a ridiculous per-year average, but there were some years that were really bad. You know, we had three or four in the fall and three or four in the spring. But anyway, and as far as reference checks go, the first is the application form we use. The candidate has to complete, have three personal references, personal references. And then this letters of reference, which are professional references. Okay? So the methodology we use is I can do the references for the professional side of it. I can't do, I'm not the employer, so I can't do the personal reference check. But we have a process that we walk you through for that. In their previous life. I was a CID agent for the United States Army and my primary responsibility was to do background checks. For people applying for secret clearances and then top secret clearances. So I have what we call three, three-generation reference check. The first three names you give me, I can tell you what they're going to tell me. You wouldn't put, the candidate wouldn't put their names there if they weren't going to say glowing things about them. But you call them, you talk a little bit about the position, you talk, you let the person explain what they're, how they're. One, what's your relationship with the candidate? Two. In the application packet, don't be offended when you say, don't be put off if candidates use the word "I" a lot. Rather than "we". Because part of what their job is, is selling themselves to you. All right? Now, if it's nothing but "I"s, that might raise a concern, but if it's a mix between "I"s and "we"s, don't be offended. Don't be taken back. But what you can do is verify with any person you speak with. Jim Hardy said he was involved in this project in your district. Can you verify what involvement he had or? Or even, just don't even give him the answer. Just say, you know, how involved was Jim Hardy in a, you know, this project that I understand your district went through? And see if it matches up what the candidate put in their application packet. The last question you ask is, thank you for your time, but is there anybody else that you know that also knows Jim Hardy that I might be able to talk to? I get a name and a phone number. Hopefully I get one from each person. So that gives me now, I'm now up to six, second generation. You do the exact same thing with those people. At last them, that becomes the third-generation reference check. If the message is the same all the way through, you can be pretty confident. If it starts to shift and change, you may need to go a little bit further. But ultimately what you get to is six people who weren't used as professional references or even personal references. That you might, you can talk to about a particular candidate. What we typically do is I work with one or two or three members of the school committee on that. Got to give you a script to follow. And then one school committee member might ask references for candidate A, another one might do B, another one might do C. Particularly where there's. But, yeah. Two members might be on the search committee, three members might not have been involved at that first level. It's a great way to get those other three members up to speed with the candidates who weren't able to participate in that first call. Can I answer your question, Mr. Carter?
Yes, thank you.
So just to kind of go through this a little bit, one of the things that the proposal will, will identify is that we, I. Working on behalf of MASC as a lead person, my support person is Glenn Kucha, the executive director. But there are three other field directors that we rely on. We get candidates from all over the state. It, and I cover a specific geographical area. So if a candidate is coming from a geographical area, I'm not covering. I reach out. To people in that area and find out a little bit of history about the candidate. What are the circumstances? Why are they, why are they potentially giving the district and try to get more information about that? I hate surprises. So. As a lead person, I would be the one meeting with you. Any task you assign, I'd be the one that would be responsible to accomplish it. I'd be the one that put the survey together for you. Show it to you, make sure you don't want to make any changes to it. You may say, no, we don't need that, but we need this as far as the list of. Areas that the next superintendent needs to have skills in, in order to go forward. Or challenges that the district might be facing in the next two or three years. You might not have two or three of these, but you've got some other ones on there. When I. I did one for, it was funny, it was two districts. One was growing enrollment, one was declining enrollment. And that's the only thing they switched on the survey with. This one, no, we need to, we're growing. We need space. We need, you know, more classroom space. The other ones like, well, we. How do you manage a declining enrollment and the financial implications of declining? That's kind of like the difference between two different surveys. But because the information comes from your community members, the results are always different. You can't put one result into another district. It just doesn't. So that's part of it. If you wanted to have in-person meetings, we'd certainly do that. And when you upfront, they're usually participations fairly light, particularly when it comes to non-school staff. But we would certainly do it if you want us to do it. Again, that's part of the fee. No extra charge. It's not a menu where you can pick and choose services. All of it. You choose what you want to do and that's what we do. The, then we would act as the collecting agency for all the applications that would come to our office. Amory Martin is our member services coordinator. All that, she gets, all the emails go to her. Addressed to me, but they go to her. And she goes through all the applications, make sure they're complete, notifies the candidate. Yep, we received your application. It's complete. We'll be in touch, kind of thing. And she's the one that adheres to the deadline. If somebody's got missing one thing, she's going to send them reminders, say, hey, you still need to get this one thing in. Make sure you know where the deadline, so forth. We try to keep the deadline at Thursday at 3 o'clock, whatever the week is that you decide to close it. That gives us all day Friday to kind of like catch up on any stragglers that might come in. If it comes in, I'm just giving it to you. If it, if it, you know, comes in the day after the deadline, I'm not going to deny you. You have to look at it. Or your search committee to look at that. The search committee, I conduct all the training for the search committee. One of our legal obligations is to make sure that they are fully aware of the requirements of the open meeting law, the conflict of interest laws. And then understanding about confidentiality, I actually hide them. I have them each sign a confidentiality statement saying. They've been told that anything that happens at a, it's executive session. So all the confidentiality rules of executive session apply to a search committee because they were appointed by a public body. They have to follow the same rules. The public body does. Then they would review the applications, identify who they want to bring in for preliminary interviews. I would set, schedule all those interviews. Make sure the candidates are aware where they need to be, what time they need to be there. I always tell them how many members of the search committee there are. That way, if they're bringing additional resources, they bring enough. So that is, yes, 12 or 13 members of the search committee. So if you don't bring anything, make sure you bring enough copies. Bringing one copy and expecting everybody to read it is kind of unrealistic. You'd better not bring anything at that point. Then, once the interviews, I'm, I'm present for all the interviews. Wanted to make sure that the open meeting law, the motions are done correctly, that minutes are being taken. I greet the candidates, bring them in, introduce them to whoever the search committee chair is. The search committee chair kind of takes over, runs the interview. Once the search committee has identified questions, I put them in a question format for them and they get one question sheet for every candidate. And they can make notes on the question sheets. And I kind of usually put like a one through five ranking on each question. So that, you know, it's some kind of measurement. If you think the candidate did really well, you give them a five. If you think they really did not well, not well, give them a one. And it gives them a point of comparison, as long as you're consistent in your rankings all the way through. And it doesn't matter if I gave him a five or you gave him a four. It's, as long as your four is, you know, what was said is a four, that same consistency applies to every single candidate. Because that's really a key component, is consistency and a fair and equitable process for everybody who apply. Once all the interviews are done, I, I help facilitate the selection of finalists. The committee should have a, when they form this search committee, should tell the search committee, how many finalists are you looking for? A typical charge is no less than three, no more than five. I'm not sure you want six or seven finalists. I'm not sure you want five finalists, but. Sometimes they, they could come up with, you know, they can come up with two real easy, but then there's a debate over. Three and four that are really close and sometimes they like the option of even able to send four back to you. Then the finalists would come to you, at which point they'd be public. And then you would go into the next phase of the project, would be candidates come, spend time here. You may do like what Marshfield did, is this, they made kind of visit starting at like 1:00 and then there was a public, it was a forum. In late afternoon and staff were able to come. It was after dismissal and then later in that night, parents or community members were able to come and meet, meet and greet the candidates. Then they did all their interviews on a Saturday morning. You could do that. You could do it any other way that works into your schedule. That's a key, key component. And once the final interviews are done, would be decision time. And of course, once it comes to you, all of those meetings are open meeting. There's no avenue to go into executive session for you to talk about candidates. Budget, you know, the contract, yes, but. Then once all said and done. My job is to notify all the candidates first who were not selected as finalists. But were interviewed and then ultimately the chair, we typically call the successful candidate and I would end up calling the other candidates. The chair could do all of it if she wants. It's not a fun job. But, and then once the new superintendent is onboard for 30, 60 days. We often come back and do a communications workshop so that everybody's on the same page on. If you have a question as a school committee member, what's the protocol for me to ask it? Making sure that the new superintendent knows what the protocol is and that you, you agree upon, this is how we're going to communicate. Superintendent needs to, the new superintendent needs to send something out. How is that, how does that happen here? Does everyone get it? Does it go to the chair? How does it work? We just don't want any faux pas. If you can, if you can nail down how you're going to communicate with each other, that's 90% of the battle right there. If you come up with a communication plan you all agree to, that's the best, that's the best way to go. And, and as always, you know, MASC is always, you're here, always here. I would like to say that, well. I won't be here after August of retiring. Thank you. But 28 years is enough. And, but I'm also going to make darn sure that my replacement is capable. I'm not going to just turn over the district to somebody. Don't waste any. Get too much invested in this process. At that point, I'm going to stop talking and if anybody has any questions, there's a lot more detail in the proposal. Again, I didn't want to read it to you.
Very much. So I'll, I'll, I'll open the floor. Do you have any questions for Mr. Hardy?
I have. We hired you before.
For the one that brought, no.
I don't believe so. I think that was a different group.
Okay, because it says here.
It was years ago.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Past four years. Passes instantly.
Yeah. So Cohasset's listed both as a search and last four years in, writing technical assistance.
I know.
Oh, it was technical assistance.
Oh. We're listed as both a search client and a technical assistant.
Last page. I could be wrong. I thought it was the, no, I know, Mr. Kucha. I think it was the Collins Group.
But I think we did provide technical assistance along with that.
That's very possible.
Yeah. It wasn't me. It was Glenn. Four years ago I was out. I'm double check.
Yeah. So. Okay, so. I'm very impressed with your organization as a whole because I do attend those meetings on the case. You guys do have a wide variety of candidates that are at those. At that convention, so that we're already aware. So going into that, I think that's a big plus for you, for you guys. And I've always thought that professionalism is, is fantastic. I think I, I'm a better student than anyone ever because of it. To go to the classes, the learning, the meeting laws. So I do want to say that I really appreciate your organization. That said.
What if some?
Yeah, but there's no but. I don't use that. It's dismissing everything I said. That said, what if, what if, like, are you guys ready to go? Are you ready for day one, ready to roll?
I can have the survey tomorrow. It's actually, I have the template built already. It's just a matter of, if, if, if what's in the template matches up with what you want.
So do you also think that because you have so many resources on the ground now as a superintendent, that to know about your organization? Is there already kind of members of it? Do you think you guys have a little advantage of your company because of that?
I don't know. I. I don't know that we, we have an advantage. I'm trying to be honest.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's an advantage over. My Steve colleague behind me here. I don't know that there's a huge advantage. With the access to candidates from one group to another. I think it's more, the difference is always going to be about. Who's here afterwards. And. Who's more, who's, who's more? I want to make sure I say this correctly. Who's got more of a vested interest in the success? Because, you know, I. When I first started, I, I told, I wasn't going to do this, but it, it helps make my point. It, it does me for a second. When I first started 26, 28 years ago, the average tenure of a school committee member was. When I first started twenty six, twenty eight years ago, the average tenure of a school committee member was five terms. The average tenure of a superintendent was twenty one years. Ten years later, that was nineteen ninety six, two thousand six, the average tenure of a school committee member was one and a half terms. The average tenure of a superintendent was about five years. And I'm sure COVID had a lot to do with this. Right now, the average is less than one term, the school committee members, in three years, the superintendent. And I don't know which one's driving which, the chicken or the egg, yeah, it's like a chicken or an egg. I don't know which one's driving which. I know COVID was a big factor for the recent turnover that, you know, for for two thousand, two thousand one, we saw very little turnover. Because superintendents didn't want to leave their districts, even though they could have been eligible to retire, but they didn't want to leave in the middle of a pandemic, which exacerbated the two thousand one, two thousand two turnover rate. But, you know, what what is clearly evident is that when a school committee can stay together with a stable administration, student achievement goes up. That's, that's a given. When there's constant turnover and flipping of school committee seats, administration seats, student achievement is negatively impacted. And student staff morale goes down because there's a new initiative every year. When you can keep a team together for a period of time, and the course stays constant, yeah, you make changes, you make alterations, but that's the direction we're going, student achievement increases. Now, I don't mean losing one member of the school committee or one administrator. I'm talking about when the majority of the committee changes between when the superintendent is hired and their first contract renewal. That sometimes becomes a challenge. So.
Well. Very well spoken, because I I've seen, I totally agree. Stability is big. That's not something that, you know, what I want this process for, someone that's going to be here.
I mean, everybody would say, yeah, how, you know, how long do you want to commit to the district? Well, the question is, how long does the district want to commit to that person too? So I'm not advocating, you know, forming a five-year contract out there the very first time, but, you know, three years is a standard, so. But.
Any other questions for?
I don't know if that was a lot.
No, that's great.
What's your caseload like right now?
We just finished one, one is nearing the completion stage, know what? Swansea's in advertising, so this would just.
So you'd be tying up one and run two.
Right, but they're like, they're not on the same, they wouldn't be on the same schedule as you. So when something's happening there, it's like in the advertising period here. So when it comes time to close ads, those other ones are done.
And thank you for the presentation. Very.
Any other questions? Mr. Hardy, no questions for me, this is a lot of information, I very much appreciate you. No, no, this is, this is, this is exactly what we had discussed and what we're looking for, you know. For, for the committee members, it's not necessarily our day job to go hunt down new superintendents. So getting a nice overview and understanding what your capabilities are and how you can help us is really what our goal was, not to commit a job, giving us some thinking on that, so. Unless there's anything else on on your end, thank you for.
Thank you for the opportunity to come talk to you, I always like talking to, you know, school committee meetings, so. Congratulations. Sorry.
It's bittersweet, bittersweet all around.
So, yeah, and it's, it's, there's a lot of them going around, so, you know, Paul's in finalist stage and Nadek just turned out as finalist, so. There's quite a few going on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Molino, he comes to us from NASDAQ as another, a search provider, who can help us, again, talk to us about what services they can provide, and how we can go through this process with them. Again, just kind of background, the, the purpose of these meetings is for us to know what the consultants can do to decide, one, if we want to engage a consultant, to do it ourselves, and two, to know what's, what's out there, as far as we can engage.
Well, thank you for considering the New England School Development Council, NASDAQ. And I'm very happy to be here tonight to talk to you about services we can provide. I believe you already have a copy of our proposal, so in the packet we have our proposal, I just wanted to be sure you had it. You also have the cost proposal, I'm not sure if you had that before. And on the left side of your packet is the outline that I'll go through tonight, but that pretty much goes right along with the technical proposal. And there's also a typical standard timeline with regard to the search. And this will give you some idea of all the things that need to get done over the course of the search process. And if you're considering going out this year, spring, late winter, spring, I would suggest you get started, it suits you.
That's the point of this meeting.
Looking at the agenda and looking at the proposal, take you through that NASDAQ. For those of you who don't know us, NASDAQ is a private, nonprofit corporation dedicated to serving, servicing public school districts and superintendent to schools. And, and so we work with schools, superintendents, school committees when necessary, and we provide different types of services. Certainly, we include the, the search services, and NASDAQ has probably conducted all over six hundred more superintendent searches over the past years. So we're very much involved in superintendent. We also do assistant superintendent, principals, executive directors, mostly high executive level types of positions. We are a, as I said, New England, we are New England, and we have a vast outreach network in terms of contacts we have throughout New England with our searches. And we also are nationally affiliated with the National NASDAQ, the National School Development Council. And so we also, we have national access to, it's part of all of our searches as well. So I think I'm moving basically over to page three on the proposal. What we would do is work with you in terms of designing the search and develop a search schedule, that would be meeting with the school committee and or a liaison that you have, and or a screening committee that you will eventually think about putting together. And, but we will sit with you, and we will design a information and personalized letter that goes out, goes up as an advertisement. And those letters throughout the process, NASDAQ probably sends those letters three or four times to our entire network, which is probably, you know, six, seven hundred, eight hundred mailings every couple of weeks. We also do the same thing with email at last. And so that letter that's put together, we would assist you in developing that letter. And really, that's where you would talk about your, your school system, and try to indicate the areas to why would people want to come and work here in Cohasset. And so that's a very important letter, and we would assist you in developing that. We, NASDAQ also has its, has a application process where we have an online application process. And we would put, we would take, we would take in all of the applications through the NASDAQ office, and it's all confidential information. And we typically would ask for anywhere from three to five references, and typically a cover letter, resume, of course, transcripts, the basic things that you would be looking for in a candidate. I indicated that we would, the places that we would send those letters and emails would be to superintendents, assistant superintendents, and job-related personnel. We would send it to the member communities, we would send them to executive directors of programs, we would send them to educational programs, placement offices, colleges, selected educational leadership professional professors throughout New England. Typically, we would put, do our advertising in school spring as an online service, but we also do top jobs, which is the online, this is all included in your fee structure, by the way. We would do place and advertisement in top school jobs, which is an online advertising for education week. We would do announcement in the Jop Bolton, which is the Association of School Administrators. And then you can see there, we have four or five other areas, or other areas where we would do, help you in developing the advertising. We have an electronic outreach, and we would also, that would also be part of the standard fee with regard to services that we would provide. We would put that on the NASDAQ website, and we would announce the vacancy through all of our affiliates and our vast network of contacts, as well as the superintendent and school board association websites. We, NASDAQ is a, as I indicated earlier, is a state, a regional, and a national search firm. So we reach out to quite a wide range of applicants. You've heard earlier, the company, you talked about developing a candidate flight profile. What we would do is work with you to develop a candidate profile, which really does become the most important part of the search process. Because putting that that together is the process itself, where you would probably have some several focus groups. We would also, we also have a online survey that we would use, and we would gather information with regard to what type of person are you looking for in the next superintendent of the class of public schools. And we would gather all of that data and put together what we would call a successful candidate profile. And that really gets into the qualities that you're looking for, the characteristics, the knowledge base, and the skills that you're looking for in a superintendent of schools. The, we work with these, whether it's the school committee or a search committee, depending on how you're going to go, we would work with you in putting together that profile and sticking to that profile, so that you have, because as you start getting into the deliberations, not everyone's going to have all of the skills that you may be looking for. And so you keep coming back to your candidate profile, so that you can, what are the priorities? And so, you know, our role, my role, would be to work with you to bring you back to those priorities throughout the process, so that you can still go and focus on those candidates. I said we would work with, work with you, and, and the contract that we would work, includes up to six focus groups that we would work, and that could be virtual, or that could be in person. Personally, I like the in-person ones myself, but tend to get some people, more people than some of the online ones. I indicated that we would do the, the online web-based survey. We certainly would work with you and the screening committee. We would, we have, we would help you decide how to select a screening committee, how many people should be on that screening committee. The key thing to keep in mind with anything that you do with a search is that NASDAQ feels that this is your search, and our role is to tailor it to whatever you feel your specific needs are, and also try to guide you through the process in terms of coming to the, trying to reach your goals in selecting the next superintendent. So we would work with you on developing the screening committee. And again, that's, that's up to the committee, as to who should be on that. That could be a combination of school personnel, administrators, staff. That could be parents, it could be community representatives, financial people, school committee people. School committee can only have, I think, I think it was mentioned earlier, that school committee cannot have a majority of the people on the search. The majority of the people on the search can, cannot be school committee people. That's an important piece to keep in mind. I won't go into all the other details about the meeting law, because I think you already heard, and I don't want to be too redundant, but we, we would also subject to the open meeting law and certain, but the search committee activities with the initial candidates are in confidential executive session. But then when you get to the finalists, that's when you would, you would open up the process. So we have different ways that you might help, help you, things to be thinking about, we can share with you in terms of selecting the people that you would want on the team. But of course, you want them to be good representatives of the school, and to know something about the school in terms of their role in the district, and their feeling and dedication towards supporting the school. We, we assist in the interview process, we would help develop any, any of the questions that, that that would be used through the interview process. It's interesting, I was, I was talking with our executive director earlier about the, I noticed that here it talks about the NASDAQ candidate doesn't typically attend the search, the screening meetings, but I think I have, I know I have. And, and so that has to be, but I know that's not going to be an issue. Once the, once the screening committee has been determined, again, I will work with, with the committee on contacting the candidates, setting up the interviews, setting up the questions, and taking the candidates through the process. Throughout the process, if any of the school committee people want to speak with any of the candidates, we will assist you in making that happen. And also work with you on, on the final selection of, of, throughout the process. Working with the South School Education Club right now, and that's, that's exactly where we're at. We're at the final stage, you have three finalists that are going to be meeting with before the draft is tomorrow. So I've been working with them throughout the process in terms of contacting, setting up the interviews, assisting with the development of the questions, and doing the background checks, resume, reference checks, and so, and those kinds of things, and we would help. But we're also, also in the process, and I'll be discussing with the, with the board tomorrow, what we call about the agreement principle, where we then find out, you know, try to get to the bottom of issues with regard to contract issues, salary and benefits and those kinds of things. Our, where people live, if they live far away, are they planning to relocate, all those kinds of things that would, might come up. You know, it could be a roadblock, you know, once you come down, down to finalists, and all of a sudden you have somebody that you may be interested in. And then before you know it, they're not going to come because they don't want to relocate, they don't want to, the salaries. So we try to get that information in time. Throughout the process, you know, available, NASDAQ would respond to all the questions from the interviewed candidates, and send them any information that they want about the school district, and or work with the school. the school district, and or work with the school district. Lots, lots of times, schools have their own process that they, that they would like to see incorporated into a search, and we would work with you in making sure that you're comfortable with, with making those things happen. So if you have a particular letter, or if you have a particular rubric that you want the screening committee to use, other than what we might suggest, we would, we would work with your people to make that happen. As I indicated earlier, we would receive all the applications at our headquarters and, and Christina McOnigle is our lead person at the offices in Marlboro, and she would, she would maintain all of the documents, which are confidential. We make sure, and we go through and make sure that all, all of the applications have all of the information that we need, that they are complete, whether that's transcripts, references, cover letters, resume, credentials from colleges, et cetera. And, and then, while we also talk with, let the people know who have been selected, we would also work and talk to, and let the people know who were not selected, that would be on NESDEC, we would make that happen, again, unless, again, work with districts, and they prefer to do those things themselves, because they want to have that personal relationship with some of the, some of the applicants. So, so that's something that we, you know, again, you would leave open to the district as to how they might want to handle that. Our main role would really be to keep you informed throughout the process, whether that's with the chair of the board of the school committee, or the liaison who might be chairing the screening committee, and we would then try to, lots of times throughout the entire process, emails will go back and forth, and we'll want, we'll want to clarify who those emails, who should or shouldn't be included in some of those things. So whether that's, you know, depending on how informed the school committee wants to be, you know, I'll need to know that upfront, so that, whether that's carbon copies. On the other hand, what goes on in the screening committee is confidential, and it's stuff, stuff that we have to keep there, so that's important, too. But I'm talking a lot about process, and any questions that might come up throughout the process. We would maintain an, I'm on page six now, we would maintain an ongoing communication with the school committee, and, and then we also would provide any follow-up services that would require. So, we also, we have, we have support services for, for the local super, for the superintendents as well. So, I guess the key thing to know is that we have an extensive background in searches, an extensive background in superintendent searches, and, and we would like to work with you with regard to where you are in your search business. And you have a copy, the other document in your, in your, we have a list of the searches we've done in the past couple of years, and so you can take a look at those at your leisure as part of this technical proposal, keeping in mind that we have what we call a two-year conditional guarantee, that if a person were to hire, but they left for reasons that we deal with, NESDEC would come back and do the search. And, and, or if you don't, if you go through the search process and you don't, you decide not to select a person, we would come back and do the search again. The only difference there would be that we would ask you to be paying for the costs of the advertising, and those kinds of things, and not for the consulting side. So, those things are included in the, in the cost proposition. I touched on, highlighted most of it.
Dr. Phil, before I opened up for the, for the committee comments and questions, first, thank you for coming and your patience in joining me early on. One question, you know, as, as we're thinking about consultant services, obviously that's a decision that's going to, whether you make it a consultant or what's called a consultant duty, is going to be a decision based on what we're looking for in district, where our district are, how involved we want to be as committee members, and so on, what our own capabilities are. I guess, from your perspective, though, what sort of factors should the committee consider when evaluating how to choose a consultant? It sounds, it sounds like the service menu between the two is very similar, it's a very complicated process.
Yes, as Jim was talking, I was saying, I don't want to, I don't want to repeat everything, but by the same, I have to differentiate, so. I think, you know, again, I think a major thing is, where do you want, how wide of a search do you want to do, I think is an important piece of that. We have an extensive network of, to reach out to, and, as I said, if you, if you look at the, the places that we've done searches recently, you'll see it's an enormous list of superintendents and schools, so I think that's certainly one. I think the relationship that could be developed, or that might come from an interview, I think is important. I think our reputation, I have to say, I've been with NESDEC for a very long time, and I think we have an excellent reputation, in terms of, we're doing multiple superintendent searches right now, and my colleagues are doing some, some of the searches right now. So I, I think, you know, to me, I think, you know, what, what is your, what is your history, what is your background in working, it's a very important piece.
Great. Well, once again, thank you all, open the floor today, can there be any questions? And again, we'll just do a little form, just questions.
You spoke a little bit about your support structure, Christina McOnigle, with the principal TV, yourself, the directors.
I'd be the principal person, and then the executive director would be working with me if I needed support, but Christina, once we got rolling, it would be myself and Christina, really, the key contact. A lot of the contact would be with Christina, because a lot of it is getting documents prepared, and making sure that we have all of that communications set up.
And then, the, in your online, the outline, I think you used the term conditional guarantee, is that item N is warranty, is that what you're?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's that two-year thing, that somebody leaves within two years. The key thing, I, another thing in terms of the cost proposal, Cohasset is an affiliate of NESDEC, and, and as an affiliate, you get a 20% discount on the services. So, when you take a look at the cost proposal, you will see that, that's included. And then it outlines any of the other fees and expenses that come up, that will be there, but the online.
This is incredibly helpful, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Dr. Phil?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, very much appreciate you again coming and sharing your, your expertise and all these materials and all the information. This is, this is obviously a very important activity and decision for our committees, so we need to make sure we have every stone unturned, oh no, no stone unturned, not every, you want, you want, you want the turned stones.
We don't want any stones.
You don't want the stones either, they have to get the turned ones.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you for considering NESDEC.
Yeah, thank you so much, thank you, appreciate it.
And so as far as committee business goes, we are going to come back to more superintendent search stuff when we get to our block eight, school governance, but for now, we're going to go back into our regular role as to interview the schools, and we'll have a brief discussion from Dr. Patrick Solon on school updates. What's going on in the schools?
Well, Charlie typically does, does a fabulous job of summarizing all the happenings from a student perspective, so I won't, I won't delay, but I know it's a long, long presentation. Just say, obviously, we're in the storm season, you know, but any doubt of that, you know, where the last couple of weeks show that we're in it. I did put in my newsletter, I kept it in there for the last few weeks, an explanation of what I go through in the process of determining school closure, school delay, you know, safety comes first, if at all possible, I understand, I mean, safety comes first always, but if at all possible, I want to have a full day of school. I understand the, you know, the burden on families to get a late notice on any type of delay or, or cancellation, so I take it very seriously, I consult with safety officials, Cohasset school families should know, you're very fortunate to have wonderful safety officials who are extremely collaborative with me, and we have a very good back and forth about making decisions that are best for our kids. And, you know, I do my best, and I, I'm very open to thoughts and ideas on what I'm doing, but I'm really trying to make a safe decision for everyone, and I'm trying to get the kids in school as much as possible. Today was a tough one, because, you know, well, I didn't think it was such a tremendous storm, but lo and behold, when I made my first call at quarter to five in the morning, found that there was a tree across Pond Street that had severed power, and knocked, or had exposed a rotten utility pole, and it was not a situation, a situation at five in the morning where we were going to get anybody up on a bucket truck because of the wind, so really had to make a determination about giving a delay, so that you could get daylight, and then we get the crews in, and thankfully, they cleared it up as quick as possible, and just want to thank the whole community for their patience on that. Problem with that is, of course, it did bring us into the high tide zones, and some of our, we know what the high tide was going to look like, thankfully, it wasn't too severe, but it, it was something, so, you know, I just want to thank everybody for their patience, and know that I will continue to do my best, working with my team, and working with safety officials to try to make the best decision. Having said that, I'll sort of defer my time over to Dr. Scollins, because she has some important academic updates, unless the committee wants to provide any thoughts on storm season because it's in the spring.
I would say, thank you. Both my wife's phone and my phone blew up this morning. It's your friendly voice.
I'm so sorry.
But no, I do, I do, that is something that is a challenge, and I appreciate you getting up so early and making those decisions. It's not an easy decision, because sometimes, you know, you can't, can't win or can't lose, like, you know, those are the decisions that you got to make, and thank you for making
No, thank you.
All right, well, Dr. Sol, thank you very much, and I'll take your invitation, we'll go to Agenda V, as you're learning, and we'll talk to another Dr. Scollins for academic issues.
If I'm a co-host, I will share.
You are now a co-hoster.
I love when I'm a co-host. So, some quick updates, I probably remember that I spoke to you earlier in the year that we had spoken with Teaching Learning Alliance, TLA, to do some preschool curriculum development and professional development, and they gave me a price, and I was like, oh, I sell a lot of money. So, they said, well, what if we tried to pull something together, so Plymouth and Cohasset are collaborating? Well, you know, we talked to people, we talked to other supers and assistant supers, and just kept, you know, keeping this alive, and we now have other districts that are joining us, and actually, one more, which not total confirmation on, but, so we have Cohasset, Plymouth, Desperian, Kingham, so it's really exciting, so we have, it's a, there's three sessions, or actually, three workshop sessions, and within those are either two or three workshops, and so, I was, well, I attend them when it happens, and so it was in Marshfield, because we kind of rotate through, too, so we can see other districts. And, so, it was really interesting and fun to talk to them, so these are just some pictures of the past, and you can see how there was one group, and then we expanded, if you look on the right on the top right now, all those other teachers, and one of the things that they said was that, as preschool teachers, they're sometimes left out of professional development, or they're kind of just a little separate entity, because often it's K through 12, and even if they have professional development within their district, they never have the opportunity to be with other people from other districts, so they were really excited, and so we're really looking at how do young, young children learn? What are the ways that we can actually make our curriculum more rigorous, and really set these students up for success? And so, there's a lot, there was a lot of work done on that, they'll continue to do that, and then in our third session, which will be in the spring, they're actually going to build a whole unit together, based on all of the information that they've been learning, and, and so, we'll all be trying it out, and all these other, so it's really exciting. I think that we'll continue to do this, I think the, that teachers have just been so positive about it, and I think the districts themselves, we've been looking for something, because often our preschool programs are much smaller than our other grade levels, right? And so, it can be costly to have professional development for them, and, to be honest with you, it's always that much. So, I was kind of joking with TLA, we built it and it came, so we're really excited about it.
And you can see Michelle Joyce and Kim Kirk.
And Kim Kirk are down there, yeah, and those are the other, and those are Plymouth teachers, and in fact, one of the teachers from Plymouth used to work, so that was really exciting to see her, so, yeah, so really excited about that. We also belong to the Massachusetts Partnership for Youth, and this is our first year as part of this organization. There are, many of the districts in the state are part of this, it's a nominal fee, and within that are an enormous amount of professional development for our staff, and we are all taking advantage of, in fact, Barbara Solanka, Director of Student Services, and I are actually in a five-module live course on Title IX and the law, and all sorts of things, which is so valuable for us, but they have everything you could possibly imagine, including, they actually have a paraprofessional series that we are, have offered to our paraprofessionals, it is after school hours, and we're going to compensate them for if they want to be part of it, because that's one of the things we hear all the time from our ESPs, is they don't have, there isn't, you know, there isn't necessarily dedicated PD for them outside of what we offer during the, during the day, so we're really excited about that, but one of the things that they have done for the very first time is offered something for families. And so, I'll post this on the website, but all of these are live, so if I were to go in here, I can show you, this is where we all go, and we have our login information, and, like I said, tons and tons of webinars for us to choose from, some are just a one-shot deal, others are several in a series. But if I click on these, these are the, all of the different things they have for families, and this, like I said, is brand spanking new for them, but it's a library of videos for them to be part of, so if you look at here, where we have, you know, Supporting Your Anxious Child Library, and again, I think these are all live links, but it can tell you right here exactly what is offered, sorry, trying to use two screens, trying to use the screen there. All right, here we go. And so, it gives you all the objectives, game strategies to calm yourself in the moment, understand the role of your emotions, play in helping your child to calm down, just a variety of things that could really be helpful for families. So, we're really excited about that, it'll also be in all of the newsletters, and shares.
It's a great resource.
It's really, really great, and really exciting to see, because like I said, it's the first time they have done this, and then just to keep that theme of collaboration, you can see on the left is our high school students participated in a math meet with Normal, Sichuan, and Kingham High Schools, so that was really, really exciting, and then on the right, you can see students working with the Cohasset Center for Student Postal Research, and that's our Cohasset Marine Science class, and in fact, our, right, ended up being with us today, when we went into Dr. Duncan's class, and the students were talking about their research, and how they were getting their presentations ready, and this doesn't just happen in our classes, they actually are out there in the field doing work, and they're actually going to present entities outside of our school, so it's a really wonderful collaborative, and really fortunate that we have, have that, too. And then Charlie already talked about this, but I'm doing a big plug, because we need some volunteers for Credit for Life, Credit for Life is a wonderful experience. So it's a really wonderful collaborative. We're really fortunate that we have, have that too. And then Charlie already talked about this, but I'm doing a big plug because we need some volunteers for Credit for Life. Credit for Life is a wonderful experience. Charlie gave a really great overview of it. But it really does give the students a nice taste of what it might be like to be a grownup, have a job, pay your bills, buy a house, all those big things. And the fact that we have so many community members that come in and help really makes a difference because it's a really, a real life experience for them. And the panel discussion to, to echo what Dr. Solomon said is really lovely. Because they really are open about what their journey has been and the students can ask questions. So anyways, I'll post that also because if you have some skill that you want to share with our students, you can sign up under this. So those are my quick points.
Thank you, Dr. Scollins. I want to go back and just want to make sure it doesn't go unacknowledged that pre-K professional development thing, you created that helping out our district, but it's helping out the region. So that is
Really exciting, isn't it?
That's making a difference beyond Cohasset, but certainly within Cohasset as well. So thank you for all that you're doing. That's, that's fantastic. We have any questions, comments from the committee for Dr. Scollins?
Sure. Thank you. That's fantastic. Back to the Credit for Life. One of the things that we were exploring is as far as the food goes, were we able to talk to our chef about these certain food that day?
So Credit for Life.
Yeah, I can definitely.
That'd be a great way to kind of cater that for us to start.
Right.
Well, I know it's in February, but it'd be a good way to.
It's a really good idea.
That's a nice idea.
Yeah.
Especially against all seniors.
It's great for community relations too. If you had a table with some samples.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I have part of it too. I was actually thinking of something. That's a great idea. Okay. Yeah, I'll look into that.
Yeah. And I love the idea of it. I love this. Again, some of the community to be a part of, it's such a learning experience for kids to be able to know that there's something out there.
It's a great program. Nicole Fitzgerald is a part of that.
You know, and I think this has been what, that fourth year? It wasn't there. So I was like.
Yeah. I think, I think it's about three years. Yeah.
It is. And I think maybe, yes, I think it was a little interrupted because of COVID, right? Before and then
Yeah.
You might be right.
It started, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it also started as a CEF grant too, which is like how the CEF should work, which is seed money for an idea to give something they would try. And if it works, then the district takes it on as its, as its own.
The students, as Charlie showed, they really enjoy this. It's exciting for them. It's very authentic. Very real, in other words, very real world learning.
And that's on February ninth?
In the morning. So it's nice.
Great. Any other questions, comments for Dr. Scollins?
The math meet, I asked a quick question about that. Is that New England Math League or just something that the teachers have collaboratively put together across the schools?
I don't think so either. I think they put it together across the schools. That's a great question, but I don't believe it is. And that I know that the middle school too is also diving.
Does New England Math League still exist?
You know what? Look it up. Yeah.
Oh, you used the code?
Yes.
Oh, you're looking for extra. Sixth grade only, sixth grade only.
Good to know.
How that I'm done.
There's no other questions on teaching learning? We'll close off Agenda.
I just wanted to mention, I was going to ask who was responsible. Cause I know it was a team. Ever going around the pre-K issue in the professional development and broadening of that programming. But my question is going to be who was the sort of champion of that, of that sort of, and that, that, that was you.
Yes, I have to give credit to Principal Farrell and right, and Barbara Swonk and I really were talking about the fact that we wanted to make sure that preschool, preschool teachers had the opportunity to have the same kinds of experiences that we were offering K through five at the elementary level. So, so it was just something that we worked on together.
I just, I, so those are the direct benefits of it, right? To ensure that they have some professional development, that they're able to collaborate with extra district professionals. And obviously that, you know, it just it also will help broaden our pre-K offerings in general. But I just wanted to remark that one of the things I love about the fact that the individuals you just named have, have created a more robust pre-K offering is that it, I think will, first of all, it serves to, I think, outfit those students sort of in a much more effective manner as we prepare them for K in grade school. So I think that it'll, it'll, it'll assist the district in student achievement in that way, right? Because if they start off on the right foot, they're already, they're, they're starting from a better foundation. It will also, I am convinced, improve our identification for any literacy issues early on.
Question.
And so it's a really, I think it's something that you could easily bypass as sort of it sounds nice and it feels good and it's pre-K. But there are some really important impactful benefits to that. And I really want to thank you for bringing that and Principal Farrell and Swonka and our pre-K faculty to bring that to the district. It's really important. I think it's going to improve our district overall. Student achievement will improve because of it.
It absolutely will. And one of the things that we're really focusing on is making sure that this is very student-centered. And that we are giving teachers a different lens on how you make sure that something is rigorous, but still developmentally appropriate. It's not just play. This play is very strategic. It's very intentional and students are actually driving how it is moving. But also at the same time, all the things that we expect for our students and that we know that we can do. And making sure that it's rigorous for that. So.
And how many, Dr. Scollins, sorry to interrupt your agenda. How many students are there with the two classes we have? How many students total? Well, approximately.
Is it twenty or thirty? Somewhere around there, right? Two?
I think, I think it's thirty something.
Thirty, yeah.
So maybe like twenty percent of a class that we ultimately have, that's pretty great, right? And so that will obviously also help, I'm guessing with classroom placements for K as well. It'll further inform for those students for that twenty percent of the class. It's, you know, a lot more data that we can use for replacement, which is important too.
And it's also integrated. So it's also an integrated program, right? We already have students that have been identified that are already in need of support, are already INPs. So you know, that piece is helpful. But then it also, to your point, now that we have more students, it does allow us to identify more students, keep our eyeballs on them to make sure that we don't create any problems.
That is really great. So thank you.
You're welcome. We're excited.
Really appreciate that. It's a great achievement.
Very welcome. So we'll move on to Agenda Block F, Budget Resources and Governance. And our first little bullet is budget finance. I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance and Operations, Susan Owen, to walk us through the F5.25 draft capital list.
Susan, if you'd like me to share what I can, but if you want to. You want me to share? Sure. We're doing the capital budget discussion.
Capital budget.
You got it.
So we've seen, we've posted this list before, putting it up here again. Pat and I met with town manager and assistant town manager to actually go over and get a preliminary idea or to give them a preliminary idea of what capitalism would look like from us. So as you can see, we, on this form, we have put letters next to, on the left, you'll see Cs, which is regular capital. And then S's were what we thought about stabilization fund. What we did discuss originally, we had the firearm for the middle and high school on there, which was estimated to be up to a million dollars. What the suggestion is now is we're going to do an engineering starting the first year for the one seventy-five. And then once that study comes back and gives us more concrete, figure it will be on the next year's list for the upgrade. It just based on timing. We, we also talked about as a group and subcommittee, and I think here that, you know, we've got to stop thinking about our roofs. We are, you know, we are going to apply to the accelerated program for roofs. But if that doesn't come through, if we have to come up with some financing, we at least want to start thinking. So we put aside about two hundred thousand dollars to put towards a new roof or renovation of roofs.
Yeah, with the thought of increasing that as we go, we get closer to the age of us. But we're still able to take care of most every other item on it.
Right. Finishing the retiring classroom at Deer Hill, then talking again with facilities and town administrative. They thought that that was definitely, should go into stabilization fund because it is maintenance of the building and much we piecemealed it for the last three years. Let's just get the project done. So there's a three hundred thousand dollar figure to finish retiring of the rest of the classrooms and how is it doing? And then we reached out to DPW, who's also had conversations with Chris Senior. And what, here, here are the items that we had on our list that have been on this for years. The asphalt road inside rock between Deer Hill and Onis Good needs to be resurfaced. The asphalt road from Pond Street needs to be resurfaced, replacing sidewalk and curbing at the middle high school and extending the sidewalk. So all those things have been on our list and it's going back and forth with, you know, is it GPW's responsibility? Is it school's responsibility? So the stabilization fund is a great way to get that project done. And what Brian Joyce is recommended is consolidating all of them into one big project with other paving within town. So while we have the contractor here, we can get a bit of a better figure on cost. So we're waiting actually for a quote on what it would cost to get all of us schools done at one time.
So it's hopeful that we could start the school year next year with all of our pay.
Also on there, the last thing after our power loss a few weeks ago, we realized that a generator at Austin is not luxury. It is an absolute necessity. So the generator loss is on this list. So that we're not really sure whether or not it's going to fall for all the repaving and asphalt. But just basically on figures here, you're looking at, here's the one point five. We, you know, we certainly can adjust figures on this list, the, you know, putting money towards Austin roof. We could put more if the paving comes in less. We could put something else on that list. At this point, that's, that's what it looks like. There have been some changes, I think, on the Chromebooks at Deer Hill. Originally, they, they estimated eighty thousand that came in and I think thirty-five thousand. So the number is going down from our regular capital requests.
You're also going to look at the signage, indoor signage in the hallways. Because we think we can get that done at a potentially cheaper price. That's our goal. That's an important one. I just think we can, I think we can do that cheaper. Don't you agree? So?
Yes. So we wait for quotes on a couple of things, but we're a little more aggressive this year with having quotes for everything. So we don't have to keep going back to capital multiple times.
So just for context, where are we in the process now? This isn't presented to us for, this presented to us for FYI input, but this is not the time we vote on.
We still have the workshop.
I don't, we're workshopping the capital.
The budget.
So we're workshopping a budget. So this is not subject of that.
I mean, it could be, it could be there if we needed to have a discussion. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll have a quote maybe done by then. So we have a better idea of what the stabilization is going to look like.
So let's put on that point for the committees. Right, right now, the workshop is really for the budget, not for capital. What's the view on the committee members of getting the capital section of our workshop?
Yeah. Yeah, because honestly, like I see a lot of this stuff here, but there's not like common, like I, I feel like there's not the water fountains for outside that we talked about outside. I think there's, there's there's no budget basically for having Syntas come in here and change out some of the sinks that don't properly wash kids' hands. These are the things that I'm seeing, these little things that aren't in here, like to be honest with you, a generator for two hundred fifty thousand. There's two hundred fifty thousand dollars I could spend tomorrow morning. And just little stuff such as getting lights to work in the auditorium that don't work. The gym, you know, we don't even have the air conditioner out there. And Stedile, you've, you've experienced how hot it gets in that gym there. We're not addressing some of the things that I think they need to be addressed. And, and you know, honestly, I would say like, just even if you said two hundred thousand dollars to have in a general fund to fix little things that we need that come up. Because like, like again, Syntas could come, come up here as a professional company. And I'm not just, I'm not advocating for Syntas. There's other companies, W Mason. And what they do is they make sure that all the first aid are packed with all the stuff that they need. Defibrillators, they take care of the defibrillators and make sure that the staffs are trained on defibrillators. So there's this opportunity that I see here that we're not really expanding on, that's not a lot of money. Such as lights, like when we walk up here, I know I donated some soul lights, but there are lights in the student parking lot that don't work. I mean, those are the things that I think that, you know, if we could say, all right, we're going to have two hundred thousand dollars located for the, for the needs that that we'll have as they don't need to be directly, almost as if it comes up, right? So if something comes up and we need to, to get it fixed, we should have that money in a, a general fund that's designed to take care of anything that comes up. So, I mean, I could walk through these buildings and give you a hundred things. You know, and I just think that, that there's stuff on here, but I don't see little things that don't cost a lot.
Mr. Kim, I think that's a, I think that's a good point. I think it's something that we can raise at our Budget Resources Subcommittee. And then I think like the idea of the committee's agreement that we can include a section of our workshop on capital resources. I think one reason you might not see that on this list is that your capital expenses really need to be the acquisition of a thing. You can't just take a capital request and make it a fund. But that can be something that we talk about budgeting for in our normal operating budget. So that's, I think that may be.
That's the place for it. Cause I think it has to be over, it's over ten thousand.
So, so could I suggest that we do have Syntas come in here and give us some that is professional. They come in here and they do all the work. They stock all the.
I don't want to, I don't want to do that now because that's not on our agenda.
No, I get that, but I'll bring it up at the meeting.
Our subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, I'll bring that up.
Should we try to have a subcommittee meeting before the twenty seconds so we can tighten this up a little bit?
I'd be gracious. Yeah, we can certainly add this to the workshop. That's, that's what it's for.
Yes.
Workshop. You know, we just, we just didn't know which was.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We'll see if we can make something organized. We'll try to get a little tighter.
Mr. Jim, can I? I have a question I'd like to ask.
You have the floor.
To what extent has the School Facilities Committee been involved in fashioning these? Has they worked with the subcommittee of the finance?
School facilities? You mean the School Facilities Committee?
Talking about the School Facilities Committee, yes. Because you know, they're charged with not only the review and evaluation of whether or not we need to replace or remodel a building, but also maintenance needs. So like they should be involved in the conversation and they're going to be very frustrated if they're not.
They have that.
Okay.
Jason Earls joined us at a meeting to talk about capital expenditures and Jason Earls and and Nick had conversations. So, and Jason was very much advocating for a lot of the same things that Nick was. That's my recollection. So I know that they were, I know at least Jason was in a subcommittee that was talking about capital early on.
I guess I would, that's, that's good news. That's good. And I had had a conversation with Jason as well, with Mr. Earls as well. And there are similar items. I just, I would just recommend that someone from the subcommittee reach out and just sort of share this working draft of the capitalist with them. And because they're going to be especially concerned with the stabilization fund allocations or appropriations that we have estimated and proposed here.
We did, we did.
It's sort of just a collaborative exercise, I think.
I think that's, that's smart. We did meet with Chris Senior, Assistant Town Manager and Ellen Martin.
Susan. You raised a good point that is still, I know I raised this when Mr. Earls came to visit with us and give his update. I'll, maybe, maybe it's just me, but I'll still confess that I'm not clear on the relationship between the Facilities Committee and this committee and who's charged with what. The facilities committee and this committee and who's charged with what. And I think maybe it's worth a joint meeting of these two committees to hash that out. And see what facilities committee should be involved in, what we should be involved in, because I don't want to create a situation where. We now have multiple layers of review and additional steps in our capital process, which is already a compressed, compressed. Timeline and goes through, as you know, lots of town committees and.
So I, I think that our budget and finance subcommittee is doing. The job, why, a lot of the, the job, what we established the school facilities committee to do. They do report to the school committee. I mean, the charge is written. I mean, I would just refer us to the charge, but yeah, that, that, that can always help too. Open communication is good. I just, that's why I mention it because.
It's, it's, it's a good point. We have this.
People meet once a month to talk about these things and get their time to it. And I think that I would be, if I was, if I was them and then. Decisions were just made around me, I would feel extremely demoralized and I would probably wonder why I was spending the time talking.
So I will, I will reach out to Mr. Earls to see if we can get a point meeting on the books to hash out that. Because I don't want, I appreciate their perspective and their work and I don't want to be left out in the cold. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything as efficiently as we can. So that's, that's a great one. Okay, so any other questions on, on capital budget? It's like the, we'll put this, we'll put more subs and comments on our workshop, but this is a good update from, from where we are now.
And by saying that, I don't mean to diminish the efforts of our budget. I think you, you guys are doing a great job and really excellent work. I just, I just don't want to leave anyone else.
No, we could use the help.
That's all.
Yeah, we'd love to have their opinion.
All right, so I think, is there anything else on capital budget?
No, that is it for.
Then we have our two standing agenda items that just reflect the breadth of the operations of school district, food service and transportation. Are there any updates for those? And I'll explain it for the agenda.
Food service. We had a meeting that I couldn't go because we had an activity. Yeah, I'd love to hear what happened.
It, it was a lovely meeting where we reviewed the, if you remember. The, the student advisory committee had created, we, we did what's called a SWOT analysis, which is strengths, weaknesses. Opportunities and threats. And I talked about threats as, you know, what do we want to make sure we avoid? You know, that type of thing. And they did a fabulous job back at the end of November. And then we weren't able to meet with Mr. Cardone in December. So we made sure that this meeting was reviewing everything. But we also had a bit of a sample size now where he could hear from the kids. About what, what they and their peers were liking about the new approach. And then he was able to talk about some of his ideas. That's when Charlie mentioned the, the crawling, the walking and the running. Where he was trying to introduce certain items in, in a way that wasn't overwhelming them. Because remember, one of their threats was don't, don't just wash out everything right away. Remember that there's some, you know, comforts that people rely on. So he's, he's doing it in a very systematic way. It was a great meeting and it really, it really, I know Josh Conley was there, it, it really kind of evolved into an open discussion. And the excitement was palpable, what the kids talking about, some of the food they were liking. One of the, the, a couple of areas they stressed early on was better salads.
Oh yeah, they love the salad bar.
And we actually saw the salad bar, we got there kind of late, so it was a little taken through, but that's a good sign too. Because the kids are really enjoying a healthy salad bar. We started today.
And the topics they have.
Yes, and then pasta and pizza. The simple ingredients in a good pizza and the fact that we have an oven. That hadn't been used in the past that was being used now. And then he talked a lot about efficiency and he did talk quite a bit, he and Mr. Cardone. Talked a lot about the, the services element of it and how you make people feel. It was nice to see the kids say hospitality and it was nice for them to talk about the importance. And this is something that happened in the interview process with Mr. Cardone. She talked about that people leave with their eyes in a lot of ways. And the kids were impressed with the upgraded sort of look of the foods that they offered.
They even just talked about a different bread and had they called it, they called it grown up bread. And it was, and it was, it was really enjoyable to hear, but from their perspective, it wasn't just plain white bread. It was multi-grain and they could see the seeds and, and so. They were really, they were just such, they're such an open group and such really thoughtful.
And the other thing is it, it wasn't the, it wasn't a one and done. Like this is clearly something that Mr. Cardone wants. He wants that input and he caters to it. So like the kids are really impressed that he has suggestion boxes in, in the cafeteria. And then lo and behold, the suggestion is, I, I, I actually highlighted in my newsletter, a couple of photos of a, a main course that. Two kids had asked for. He did it and he did it with a lot of flair. So. I think there's something really special building here and I think it's just, I, I, I think just the focus on it's going to really put us on the map. Food service, I, I think we're destined to be the best in the state, frankly.
That's our goal. I, I would also, one of the things that we still want to address is the elementary.
He's on that.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Starting, you know. But there's been some palpable improvements there, like now you'll notice you will, you no longer have elementary here.
No.
If you look at the, the menu, every single day, you'll love this, there's a garden salad and vegetable, vegetable crudités option every single day. And my son is a big veggie eater, guys, and he would eat school lunch before. Now he does, because basically it's, it's a very traffic thing, like a clear, like bento box type situation. And it's just fresh, fresh vegetables. So that's being offered the element. That's a good step in the right direction. We're still, you know, I think uber focused on the six through 12 kids. I think, but, but like, like who was it that said this earlier, I think it was Charlie, said that. Mr. Cardone, Cardone had mentioned that you got to crawl before you walk before you run. So I think we're still on the crawl stage with, but we're, we're moving.
Yeah, maybe I suggested our committee can maybe have.
We, we also have a lot of points that we developed to gather input.
Right.
And a lot of those are happening, like Mr. Cardone went down and talked to the Deer Hill Student Council. So students gave him ideas. He's talked to the, my advisory council, he's got the, the, we want to give more for families. And, and he's also been meeting, he's starting to do the process meeting with staff. And one of the things he talked about yesterday was the possibility of having a little bit more food tailored to the person. Our small district and some orders ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah, we've talked about that. That's key.
He talked about the teams, talked about it with, like having an order so that the, the kids know exactly what they're getting.
Right.
And he talked about it with staff and he's actually, the kids asked, could we do that at school? And he didn't say no.
Yeah.
He said, yeah, we can figure out ways, ways to do that.
Yeah, okay, so that, that, that's wonderful.
And he should be coming to the wellness committee meeting on the 17th.
Great, great.
So it's exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he's definitely passionate. When I went in today. There, you know, everyone was working, but someone said he was in the kitchen with his chef hat. He was scratch cooking cinnamon rolls for tomorrow and he had this like big, I'm not a cook, so big log of dough. Spatting it with flour, I think, and then he was kneading it and it was impressive to see it. I'm much.
I feel there was some cinnamon in there.
I don't think I've ever seen someone actually making something like that here.
Yeah, it was very nice.
And he was loving it, like, you know, he's showing his hands or.
Yeah, and honestly, like, I think that there's some, a lot of room for home, home act here. I'm very fortunate. My son makes his own bread. Jack is an amazing cook. Like he just goes, he makes it for his youth group. I'm making lemon cookies today. Like, and that all started with. I self-funded, I, I had, they had like a four week program. We went and learned how to be a chef.
Yeah.
Those are the things that, that we like to incorporate in.
They were, the students brought it up and they really want some options. And they've been joking about how the fact that they want to be able to.
And as a parent, to be honest with you, I always had, I, two years ago, I didn't eat the school lunch. So it was, it was very difficult for us as parents to get, you know, what do you want for lunch type of deal. Now it's, I just drop them off at school.
I did, I did think this is a great success story. And actually, Dr. Sullivan, I, I blanked your thoughts on whether or not Mr. Cardone would come to work. I want to work with him at the evening for him, but he thought so much about him and what he's doing. Great to get him to, to come and just do a brief presentation to us about what he's been doing, what his thoughts are, where he's going.
We, that, that'd be great. I mean, I would want to talk to Mr. Cardone. I think that's a, that's a nice idea.
So I'm going to close off food certification and quickly go through community relations and communications. I have included, now, I don't know why I. Really helpful. This is where we get our reports from school committees, subcommittees and liaisons. And I included a list of our subcommittees and liaisons. So that we know exactly who's on what and when. And, and the dividends of that are, are going to be immediate because as I say, the first element of, see, there's any. There are no updates, I don't think, unless you from the school governance committee, because we have not met. Budget resources, I think we've effectively heard the update from that from the capital. Any updates from communications subcommittee? And then food service and nutrition, I think we've heard updates there. So that, that covers our, our base. There's a list of liaison assignments. I'll open it up in a moment and see if there's any updates from the individual liaisons. I do have one. I forgot we had a legislative liaison and I sent it to Mr. Carr and Mr. Keeney. I've been having attempted conversations, but we've not been able to connect with. Senator Sullivan, Senator Hunter's staff about coming in here and helping coordinate MSBA visit. And I'm wondering if I could impose on our liaisons to help encourage on that.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
So I will, I'll forward you the emails, but that, that's, I think that's, you know, immediate dividend right there.
Yeah, that would be my pleasure.
So any other, we'll get the representative liaison assignments out of the, the Cohasset Middle School, school council has not met. Yet, I don't believe, I'm starting to go if they did. But I think I can cancel. Any other, you have some updates?
I have a couple of suggestions. One would be the diversity. Jim, maybe we can talk about like. We still haven't really hired a person of color in the district. I think that's something.
Yeah, I have some comments along those lines in, in terms of looking at our job description. There's absolutely no mention of diversity.
Yeah, so maybe you and I can have like something to, to go on and maybe meet with the medical director. Because we suggested also too is trying to get somebody, a former Cohasset student that might be interested. Because I think that would be a good way to, somebody that already knows the district and. So those, that's one thing I'd like to work on as far as the diversity, as far as this wellness committee, we have one on the 17th, right? Looking forward to that. And the other one is safe harbor. I just want to give you guys a little feedback of what I got from Safe Harbor, listening to when they were here. They felt like they, we didn't give them any recommendations. That's the feedback that they gave. The next committee. So, I mean, I'm hearing this because my kids are all in it in their own different rooms. And one of the things is they, they thought that we were going to give them some recommendations. So, you know, I would like to maybe meet with some of the ambassadors to them because I think. You know, when they mentioned vaping, I want to be able to make sure that we address that. Especially teenage drinking, that's something that, you know, is out there that, that I think that really shocked me was that 60% of parents are buying alcohol for kids. I've, I've heard kids getting their stomach pumped last, two weeks ago. Student, when Cohasset students, kids got stomach pumped. It's real, kids are drinking and, and it's not good. And then the kids that aren't drinking feel like they're not part of something. So. It's a big concern in, in, in the district and as a father of three high school kids. I'm very concerned with it. Not, I, I, not only concerned about my kids, I'm concerned about. The future kids knowing, you know, this, this is something that when we get those TVs inside, inside each classroom. I'm, I'm sorry, inside each hallway, those are the messages that we need to do. You know, I'd like to meet with Officer Taylor. And get his opinion on these and what he could do, because our resource officer should know a little bit more than we do about the concept of fact. So I would like to invite Officer Taylor in to discuss teenage drinking at one point and see what we can offer our students. Would they want to hear our recommendations to them, especially the kids that don't. So how do we, how do we, how do we enforce that? And, and, and not, I think that's all education, right? So if we had, again, with why, why these TVs are so important throughout the district. We need a, we need a sign out in front of Cohasset High School, we need one in front of Deer Hill. And then we need all, all the hallways to have TVs that are screens for information, right? And then you could be, that's when you could spread the message district wide. So you could run. And, and especially in an emergency situation too, you could like pump, all the district could have them on all the screens. So those are things that I think are important, that we work on pretty quickly. Those, that's not a big ask. I think it was a $50,000 ask, you know, maybe that could be less money. However. We are going to have to have like little satellites on each TV that can pick up transponders to be able to send out that information, right? So if, if we have something schoolwide, then you can break it up to the middle school could send out their stuff, the high school can send out their stuff. But when Mr. Doc, Dr. Sullivan wants to send something district wide, that's important. That's something that, you know, and I'll be able to share some of the stuff in the communications meeting too. I think that's part of the problem, that we're not being able to communicate and we're putting up signs and stuff. I think one sign would help a lot.
So, but Safe Harbor update, they were looking very basic.
Yeah, they'll, they'll look forward to.
So that, I think, I think it's a helpful, I appreciate that. Any other liaison, subcommittee updates before we move on to our school committee governance with the immediate superintendent search process agenda?
Let's please move on to that.
All right, so we'll close off. So now we're going to get back to our superintendent search process. There's three sub, sub items under the first one. The first one is the discussion on superintendent search committee. We want to have a discussion here and potentially form a superintendent search committee if that's the view of the, of the committee. And so that's the, the goal of this discussion. I think that from my own perspective. I do think a search committee would be an appropriate step to make sure that it helps. Put the burden out there. And then we also heard from a confidentiality perspective that a search committee upboards can base a little more confidentiality in their candidacy. I guess first threshold discussion is, is there anyone who takes a view that we do not need or want a certain, to form a search. All right, so establishing that, then we will move towards establishing a search committee. The second question is, what should that search committee look like? I'll offer one, and I, and I've spoken with the vice chairman calling on improvement on composition. But this is obviously a full committee decision, so everyone's input is welcome and required. One of my overarching concerns is timing. We heard both of our consultants talk about that we're in a very compressed time period. So I want to make sure we get a committee that is agile and not too large as to create a situation where you have issues getting forums. Or you have, you know, a, an inability to make decisions quickly. So. From my own perspective, that puts, you know, a number of, of people at around 10, at least that, but. I do want to open it up to, to the, to the committee to, to get thoughts and on what the number of people would be. And what the constituents should be. So with that, I think we'll try this open forum and we'll just have a, have an open discussion. You want to lead?
It would be my suggestion, it's an odd number over even. I like the number smaller than larger. I'm drawn to the eloquence of Charlie and the others that appear here. I'd like us to consider maybe having a student be involved. If they could, educator, a community person. A parent at least. A select person. The union, teachers' union person. Other things that can.
Well, I had not thought about it as select or, that's a, I think that's, that's a good idea. I'm personally on the fence on, on, on student participation. I think we do have some very elegant, eloquent and thoughtful students. And it's obviously very impactful for them.
But let me explain a little bit. I will only point out our esteemed colleagues right here who are, A, excellent with their jobs. But they have such compassion and ability to relate to the young people we serve. That I think the perspective of a young person to be able to weigh in to say. That human nature of the next superintendent is important to us too. That's why I think a student should be. That's why I think a student should be considered.
That's a great point. For for a few reasons. I love it. It's a good idea. Especially given the underlying theme of the job description.
I will. I I will mention, and I should have mentioned this earlier, that I did receive a note from our teachers here in the CTA. And they were looking to have that they were willing to be a part of the committee, which is fantastic. And asked if they could have two seats on the committee, one for middle, high school ages, one for elementary schools, which makes sense. In the sense that those are different jobs. And I think that that both of those representations would be helpful.
Like the same for the principals. I should have one for LE, one for secondary.
And what about the custodians of the teachers?
So I that's why I think we start moving into too large of a committee. Because we're already throwing out that student, two CTA, two principals, two school committee members. And I think we were under the operating assumption I would nominate myself and our vice chair as as the as the school committee members just because of the positions we occupy here. But so then we're two school committee members. We have we have parents as well. We're starting to get into an unwieldy amount of amount of people. I do think parents, I think that's. We want to have at least a couple of parents, maybe three parents.
I I would just suggest like just one custodian, just because like I think it's important to be able to have somebody that can communicate the law. Knowing somebody that could have, I think, just my suggestion, I think I think they have.
I I I hear you on the idea, Mr. Kearney. I I it like I saw Miss Leslie shake her head when you when you suggested it. Because it makes sense to have like to include very every every sort of facet of our operations, have them represented. But there are also going to be in this process, like staff oriented focus groups to talk to them. So there's going to be other ways other than the actual placement or actual seat on the committee, which does have to be fairly nimble. You can't have a committee of like 15 people doing this. And there are important stakeholders that, you know, I mean, everyone's important, but they're like crucial, I would say, critical stakeholders like, you know, principals and teachers that we have to have on that. They have to fill the we have to have faculty and building leaders on that. And we have to have school committee representation. So it just it fills up quick. So I it's built into this process and and we can't have, we'd love to have 10 family members on it, right? But we can't have that. So built in this process are a number of different ways to gather and elicit input from different stakeholders and subsets of stakeholders. So I think we got to we got to consider that too. It's not like we're certainly not going to ignore anyone or or or, you know, basically freeze anyone out of any perspective.
Yeah, I would just say it's almost like I'd like Sue to be informed, like she basically wants. Yes.
I think maybe.
I I, you know, I don't want to put my name out there, but I think they do. Sure you are. I'm sorry. I know. I honestly think you should be. I think you should know who you're going to work with. I mean, it's a big job. I mean, it's it's part of running the school is to run the buildings and know somebody that knows what they're talking about. Because, you know, that's going to be a key role in the next superintendent is how are we going to how are we going to fix these buildings? They don't have a clue, you know, it's more the administration part. I guess that will come up. I guess I can make those points.
I think too, to that point, and I think Craig, I I maybe I'm just going to reset what you said. But there are ways in which all members of the community can participate in one way or another. But I think maybe what we need to do as a school committee is to be very transparent about why and how we're inviting voices at certain at certain points of the process. So we would like a lot of parent participation at this point in the process, and this is your opportunity to be involved. We would like a lot of staff input at this point in the process because this is a long process and very early on, I mean, I I'm thinking seven instead of even nine. I like your odd number so you get when you have to make decisions. And that some of these people will play multiple roles that potentially as two CTA seats are taken by CTA members who are also either potentially principals or members or teachers at the elementary level or at the middle school level. And so so can kind of tick some of these extra boxes or perhaps a part of the custodial staff. But I, you know, I think thinking broadly about which people may provide multiple perspectives in each of those seats is also important.
And one other thing, Mr. Kearney, just as an underlying, this committee is not the beginning of the input. The goal of this committee would be to facilitate the process by which we select a new superintendent. And the selection will be done by this committee, this school committee, not by the search committee. The search committee is a vehicle for assessing candidates, interviewing candidates. It's actually very much a working committee. That's another reason. This is going to be, this is going to be a number of hours for each of the members to do their do their job. So it's that's another reason why we want to make sure we get people who are who who really want to be on this committee. It's going to be, we're going to be interviewing candidates. We're going to be giving interactive assessments, doing lots of things that that have to be done. So there there need to be, to your point, if it, the point of your concern is to ensure that we get custodial input. Absolutely, that's critical. Do we need them to have a seat on the committee to have that input? I don't think we do. Because a lot of what this committee is is to take that input, digest it, and then give this committee a readout of what the view of the community is. So hopefully that that's helpful.
So can I also suggest a CEF member?
Yep, I don't know. I I don't know. We want to have, because we start with that, then we PSO. I think maybe we can accomplish that through our parents. We have seats.
And then.
I think you made a great point about like there'll be a time for that, like so that like we're going to have a process of like parents going to be able to meet this superintendent, meet and greet. Would be maybe that would be a time to, you know, tell CF that CF to come to that. And I think that I think there'll be a time and place for that. Right to your point, gentlemen, right?
I I would think that the processes that I've been involved with in terms of hiring school leaders involve very sort of controlled opportunities for stakeholders to meet with candidates. And then to provide feedback to the search committee, which then, you know, would be shared with the school committee about what they're what they're thinking about, what they're looking for, what their impressions were, et cetera. And some of this too, I think, is is around for the search committee to think about Cohasset is unique in that it has a very active CEF and PSO and CPAC and arts boosters and athletic boosters organizations. Candidate A, how have you worked with those organizations before? I I think too that like what's coming up now are also some of those sort of criterion around which selection can happen or to be thought about or.
What are the thoughts on on membership? I'm going to here is kind of categorizing it and I'll be back out with the thing as we can start calling.
Are we allowed to have a school committee on this thing? One person, shouldn't we?
You could have two.
Two.
Two, two, should we?
Yes.
There is two. Yes. So my so my my vision for this was two faculty members, one LE, one secondary. Two building principals, one LE, one secondary. Two school committees, chair and vice chair. And and again, any decisions are made by the entire committee. This is just again a group facilitating this process behind the scenes. And then family members. I I don't I don't know how many to include. I don't know. I I, Mr. Carr, I thought about select. I don't. I don't know that they need to be included in the search committee, in my opinion. I'm just giving my opinion right now. It's not, I'm not. Because I I feel like. I mean, they can certainly be, I mean, you you see in the timeline here, like, you know, planning community focused groups. I mean, we can certainly, there's going to be time and hold the group forums. There's going to be time for anyone regardless position to share perspective. I just don't see why we need to give a seat on the superintendent search committee to a select board member. I I I'd rather use the seats for stakeholders who are directly impacted. I mean, maybe there's a family member that wants to do it that happens to be on the select board. That that's that's something. But like, I don't know. I I just don't see why, like ex officio, they they sort of need to to have representation in the search committee. I don't know the number that we have. Oh, I I also think that it would be helpful to have our assistant superintendent on the committee as well, if 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 Dr. Collins is willing to do that. And if it ends up, you know, being appropriate. But and Dr. Sullivan is a non-voting member to at least observe and provide assistance if you could be, you know, be. Not voting, but you know, obviously to sort of see the process and but I that was my vision. I I just I don't know the number. The magic number is kind of tough. I feel like, yeah, seven, nine.
Giving for giving score so far, what I what I have is CTA slash teachers, elementary, middle, high. That's consistent with yours and the request for the CTA.
It's two parents.
Yeah.
It's two, two teachers, two teachers. And then I would suggest we do two parents.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. CTA, so teachers, two teachers, principal, two principals. So it'd be two principals, so two teachers, two principals, a student.
Ah, that's right.
Two school committee members. Parents, I I penciled in three parents because we get parents that have that are members of. You can ask which parents want to join, but you could find parents from CF, find parents who are members of CPAC, find parents who are other other organizations. So that's that's where you can get some of that administrator. And then Dr. Sullivan as as a non-voting member. I think that brings us to, if my math is correct, I think there's nine members there. With Doc, Dr. Sullivan.
One, four, five, six.
Oh, that's eleven. That's eleven. Sorry, my math is wrong. Which eleven.
Does eleven include Dr. Sullivan?
No.
Yeah, so that's good. So that's 12 with him. So that's 11 voting members, which is odd.
And that's great.
Yeah, I think that's important. I love the student. I forgot about that because I hadn't thought about that until you mentioned.
The only thing I would say about the select person is I think it has been the practice to have a select person on the search committee, but not that we have to do that because we did it before. I don't feel strongly about it. I just bring it up because it's a whole end of the town that is not school oriented and that gives them voice.
And the student would be non-voting as well?
Right. Well, if we make the student non-voting, then we could have a select board as a voting member. So then we'd have two non-voting members. And then it'll be thirteen total, two non-voting, and then we'd have a select board filling that voting spot. So eleven votes.
Kind of funny this way. I'd let the student vote. I think it's a great tribute to the people we serve here. I, you know.
I I agree.
What a cool experience for a young person to be involved in.
I I I agree. I I I think that, I mean, it's it's tough. It's a tough one. It's a tough one.
This is something that consulting can add, help.
To your point, Ted, it's it. This is only an advisory committee. We're going to be voting.
That's true.
You know, so this is this is something that that I think and students love to and have that that part to be able to say, they said.
I think you have to be a senior.
Dr. Sullivan, you look like.
No, I don't want to get, I mean, I just let the student, you 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 might, I mean, you can look at it a couple of ways, but you might consider a junior or a sub. Some because then they they're invested in.
Yeah.
In being there with them and they actually.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
It's really not my, you.
Now, this, you're.
But the, look, students are, it's it's the first line of our mission.
And Dr. Sullivan, I mean, to put you on the spot, obviously, your first thought, but if it if it doesn't work for you, then it's, you know, for whatever reason, then, you know, some administrators.
Yeah, we were just side barring. So special education, you just want to be sure. Even if you, I know that you're talking about parents in in the hopes that someone might, but you might want to think about central office and that.
Could be, could be, Bob. It could be somebody that I just, I would just say, that's such a major part of this. Thank you.
Well, that would be one of the, I mean, CPAC would certainly be one of the like the.
As a parent, as a parent. Oh, absolutely.
You just have to cover that in that.
You might want to think about in the interview process that you have some, just a thought. And maybe have someone at the table.
Do you feel like a team chair from one of the schools would?
Could be.
Could be. Just have that. I think that perspective is really important.
Right.
Whether it's a parent, central office administrator, a teacher, whoever it might be, just someone that brings that.
Yeah, it could be.
It's it's maybe hard to accomplish without finding without thinking individuals. But I think we might be able to accomplish. The the certain individuals will have experience that they can bring to bear to solve some of the some of these some of these things. But I guess as a as a straw man framework, what do we think of the 11 person with Dr. Sullivan as a non-voting criteria?
Name them again. Can you go through them again?
Yep. So two teachers.
Yep.
Two principals, two school committee members, six, a student, three parents, and an administration. And then the outgoing superintendent as a as a advisory.
But so so basically, we'd have to make the administrator Mr. Wonka or, you know.
Well, it could be a parent, though. I'm jumping, sorry. I know it's it's up to you, but it could be a parent who's who happens to be CPAC or it could be a teacher who's special education teacher.
Okay, so three. So how many parents do you have on there?
Five.
So we just make one of them a primary CPAC. What about that? Is everyone on board with that? That would help.
I think, I mean, you're not, you're trying to get a broad perspective. There's always going to be angles you can't. But you, as you said, it's a process, right? So you're going to get voices throughout.
Right, exactly.
That's pretty comprehensive.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is this is the creative finals.
Yeah.
Creative finals. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Pat, was this your kind of perspective when you were going through the process, this kind of group?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it was publicly published, but the group of marsh, so I can tell you, but the group of marsh was actually 15.
Fifteen.
Yeah, I that does not, I'm not saying that has anything to do with Lance's point. I get your point. It's just that's what it was. And it was the same type of group. I think that there, you know, that when you get to that, I think sometimes that's what they become 15 is because, you know, you have these decisions to make. And I think they just put them all on. And, you know, conceivably.
No, that's a big.
I was going to say that. With the timeline that you're on, getting 15 people together at the same time, all the time.
That would be, that would be tough. Eleven would be tough. And and there's nothing to say that that this.
I think I think eleven.
It needs to be. Might get no interest from parents. We might get overwhelming interest from parents. That may require us to make some changes to the constitution of the committee. But if they, as a as a threshold, it seems like it's fairly good starting point.
Can I throw a wrench in?
Absolutely.
That sounds like a great, it sounds like we're sort of a consensus sort of in terms of the 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 constitution of the committee. That's good. In terms of selecting these folks, letters of intent, I think, are appropriate, at least from the families. Just to keep it fair, you know, I what do we think about? Do we just have the CTA nominate the faculty or do we have the, how do we do the faculty members? We just, I guess we just leave it to the union to.
So let's, you're moving chapter ahead, just to close off this. This this, the creation of the committee does require a vote. I'm going to hold the vote until we go through the other processes just because some of the decisions we might make about consultants might impact what we think of the committee. But now moving on to the second stage, if we are kind of in general agreement on this structure with 11 of these seats, then the question is, how do we decide on who fills those seats, which I think what you're going to.
Yes.
Yes. And do we want to decide that? Well, how do we decide? How do we want to decide that? I guess for the CTA and teacher seats, I do think that's a consultation with the the CTA. I do think.
Can I just make a little suggestion that I've seen in other districts, they actually do open it up to all the teachers to, because they are all members. And that could include, yes, like they're just.
I like the CTA suggestion of a, but an elementary and a second. That makes sense.
So we got a letter of consent process for it.
Yes, is that what you're advocating for, Dr. Okay, so.
Just because it's a broader perspective.
I I like that. I like that. I do. And definitely for the families, I think it's appropriate because otherwise, how do you keep it fair?
And would we be looking to for or or want to sort of within the call for letters of intent, looking for any sort of particular points of view, such as like parents who potentially also work in recruitment, HR, hiring, things of that nature, which may bring an additional lens, professional lens to the process?
Yeah, I I I think that would obviously, I think, yes. I mean, the answer to all those questions is yes. I think we want to bring every perspective to bear. And if there's a, if there's someone who's interested who has recruiting background, I think that's an absolute plus because that helps us really. That's someone who could actually help steer the process a little bit, a little bit better than someone who doesn't know it. But then there could be parents who have CPAC backgrounds. They bring a different perspective. There could be parents that have a legal background, no perspective. But parents that have administration backgrounds.
You guys are sitting right there.
So there are, there are, there are, I I would, I would really want to see what the what the body of applicants are. But I think that goes back to your point. I don't think we're going to get names for a committee today at night. Um, so there are, there are, there are, I, I would, I would really want to see what the, what the body of, of applicants are, but I, I think that goes back to your point. I don't think we're going to get names for a committee today, tonight, but we can solicit letters of intent and then look at how will we fill for our.
And then, and then do we, and then, okay, so first of all, as far as family goes, I was just thinking the same thing. Ellie, secondary, and then special ed. Because there's three of them. That's what I was thinking. We asked for letters of intent. I guess, and who considers these? Are, are the letters of intent, yeah, because we're not going to know who any of the committee members are other than us.
I think we need to.
After tonight.
I think we need to.
So we're gonna, so this letter of intent are going to be submitted to you?
Yes, it's fully.
Okay.
Whoever the chair of the search committee is.
The chair of the search committee.
Well, I, I don't think we're gonna have, I don't think we're gonna have people in seats that are search committees, letters of intent are gonna have to come to school.
Because that won't be formed yet because we won't even know which teachers or principals necessarily get.
Very true.
So at our next meeting and maybe given time, we might, we might consider an interim meeting, but definitely our next meeting, we need to appoint new members for seats in this committee.
Yeah.
If you were to hire one of the consultants, would they help with your search committee? Maybe they could manage that part around the letters.
I don't think it'd take too long to do that. I would just, we can do it ourselves. We can handle that part ourselves. I don't want to have to go through and hire them and then have them do that. We're gonna waste time doing that.
Okay, so, so right now, the idea of the committee is we have a straw man, um, seats, um, for the parents. We would, we would send out letters, send out requests for letters of intent, see who's interested, look at those at our next meeting, select from those. Soft criteria are elementary, middle high, and then CPAC would be, like, at the ideal candidates, but depending on what pool we get. Same with teachers, um, and actually, Dr. Sullivan, I guess we'd ask you to help, help us with that process or maybe, uh, the CTA, I don't know how, how best to solicit.
I don't know that the, I mean, I, I, I think talking to the CTA is fine, but I, I don't know that they would, would value one member over another member. I, I think they're just looking for representation from elementary and.
I'm just, the process of collecting, of, of soliciting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that would be on either you guys or CTA.
I'll help in any way.
I think it has to go through the CTA, but we'd have to send it to Mr. Rowland tonight, right? Any sort of like survey or asking the entire teachers.
You have to get permission.
Right, we have to go through, right, yeah.
And we'll also need to rest on you for the selection of the student. Um, we'll leave the, the letter of intent for, I guess, the students. Sure, listen to that.
Yeah.
So.
That'd be interesting.
So that leaves, so, so pending on teachers, pending on student, pending on parents, um.
Maybe Safe Harbor might discuss this as an option to see if there's anybody in that group that might want to serve as a student.
That's a, that's a, that's a great suggestion. Um, principals, uh, the, the benefit on principals is there's a smaller universe of principals. Um, so I think there's four. So if we're picking two, I think that's, that's, uh, a fair, um. That, that we might be able to identify human beings now, but I don't know if we necessarily need to, since we're, since we're already six, we're not going to be able to create a quorum at this meeting.
I think you're following the same model, elementary and secondary.
You have to take the two extremes. You have to take.
Let them discuss them on their own.
Yeah, you have great, great principals.
Yeah. Uh, just that you have great teachers. It's just a balance. So what we might do is, um, maybe we'll, if, I'll go over the next, between the next meeting, we'll see which principals are interested in joining and then, um, you know, come up with some names at the next, next meeting. I don't know if we're gonna send you the whole letter of intent process for that. We know what those, what the principals are. Um, and so then all that's left, that's nine of the eleven, and then it's the two school committee, um, positions, which I would again, both, uh, suggest that the chair, the vice chair, unless there's, there's opposition, we don't need to vote on that tonight because we're not going to be able to create a functioning committee tonight anyway. Um, but any discussion?
I think that's great, and I might actually suggest we vote on you guys. That way, there's a direction, people as they're coming in, that we have now selected you guys to be part of this committee.
And one of us should chair it. And then we have a head of that committee.
Yeah.
And it makes sense.
We can form the committee and then put up, but you as chair.
Because you're chairing this.
Um, so if that's, um, we could do that, but that we.
I agree, Mr. Carr. Yeah, let's just get that done.
So, um.
One other thing, just as we talk about this, could we ask the administration and the principals and their weekend correspondents to help us populate our thoughts about committee members? And so we're asking the community, goes out in your newsletter, maybe the ones.
If, however you want to do it. If you want to do a blurb, I'll make sure it's in every newsletter.
Yes. A little blur. And then actually, this is where I, I do not want.
You could also send the direct email. Direct, you could do a direct.
I would do both. I would do.
What, I guess what, what I was, what I was about to say is I, I don't want this search committee to be the beginning and end and the talks in which all this happens. So I think this would be a great place for the communications subcommittee to also help out during drafting that, uh, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Um, and we can, we can all work together on that. But I want to, I want to make sure this is transparent. We're all, we have, we all have, this is important to say, we all need to be heavily involved, so. But let's, I think we've got contours of that. Let's do, hold off, uh, on a vote on that until we go through the, um, the next, at least the next one. Uh, that's job description, I think will be a separate topic, but the, um, the second is, we did keep the discussion of the tentative search consultant. Um, we heard from two candidate firms today, uh, on what they can offer. Uh, we looked at prices eleven and thirteen thousand. Uh, I'm, I'm interested in committee's views on first topic, whether we should be a search consultant. And if the answer to that is in the affirmative, then, um, which of the two we want to, or if we want to see more. So. Um, just as we just did, I'll, I'll open the forum there, uh, and I'm happy to launch all the discussion, but I'm happy to seat the floor as well.
So, I think it, I think it would be a good suggestion to have a search consultant. I, uh, I'm not necessarily, I don't, I'm not concerned that, about either of those guys and those organizations, I think. Um, they bring a similar perspective. They bring a similar process. Um, fees are contemporary, you know, you know. But I, I, I think we would be well served by either one of those. If there's another group out there that does that sort of stuff, I think we could hear from them, but I feel comfortable with either of those guys. Do you want to discuss our thoughts on one over the other?
In, in a moment. Um, anyone who's kept thoughts on, um, I, because I, and I, um, time is for fun to, uh, come back in to offer his thoughts. Um, I'll say my, my thoughts are on the committee. I do think there are some key functions that they would perform for us that, even if it's not necessarily the substantive work of hiring the superintendent, but the, you know, obviously the advertising, they've got connections and advertising, they know how to do it. Uh, and then just the administration of the process.
Yes.
Yeah, collecting the applications, you know, weeding through applications, keeping them confidential where they need to be. Um, if you don't have that, then you're stuck. There's an, going to be an individual who's part of that committee who's stuck maintaining these confidentiality obligations. So. And honestly, I, I was, um, surprised to the, I was surprised positively at the cost. Um, I, I, my, um, my, my expectations on costs were, were, were higher than that. So it does feel like good value for money. From the time of the weather to the, to, to.
Yes.
Mr. Carr expressed his, um, his, his view that it seems like a good idea. I'm sharing my view that I think just for the administration aspects of it.
Great.
I think they, um, would add, would add a lot of value and the, uh, cost is not simply, although I would refer to it on our budget. So, any, any concerns on your end of, of having, finding available money for that?
Oh, no.
Okay.
We'll find it.
Any other views?
Put it on Mr. Kearney's credit card.
That's totally over. It's, my kids are over the limit. We'll not process that.
So any other thoughts on, uh, whether we should engage a consultant, especially, any, any thoughts that we should?
I think, I think we should. I mean, given that we need to be as efficient as possible. Um, this is a tight timeline. It's, it's in a funky spot to be getting started for, for hiring in terms of the educational sort of ebbs and flows. Um, and I think that will benefit from the efficiencies, uh, tremendously.
So, Dr. Sullivan, do you remember who we hired before? I mean. I believe. Uh, it was the, I believe it was the Collins Center, and I think there probably would be.
Yeah.
UMass.
Is there any?
That's right.
UMass.
Do you want to hear from another one or do you want, do you want to talk?
Well, so I, I guess we're in consensus that we are, that we do want to pursue hiring a consultant, which I agree.
Yeah.
Um, especially given the, the tight timeframe.
Yeah.
Then the question is, we heard from two, um, do we have views on it or not? We have enough information to engage one of those two. We want to hear from a third. Um, I have some views, but I'll, I'll open the floor. And this car, you, you expressed your view that you'd be comfortable with one, but then you started to go on.
Yeah, I forgot about the Collins Center. I'm familiar with the organization, um, to the extent they want to send us some paperwork that we could look at. I'm not opposed to that. Um. It's, it's an internal organization at UMass Boston, does these services for municipalities, and they provide host of services and searches as well.
I guess my own view is that the value add that I see from these groups is fairly fungible. Um, really what I see them providing is not, I think we will have as a group, the substantive knowledge on how to create the job description, how to interview the client, how the, the, um, the candidates, how to do the, you know, marketing of our, of our town, how to position, how to position the group. And I think we're gonna have a good, I mean, just to talk from the discussion here about the, uh, search committee itself, I think we're gonna have good, um, capabilities there. And so then from my perspective, I'm looking at, you know, it's really just the, you know, keeping the applications, sorting them through, doing the ministerial work of making sure they're complete, can, doing the coordination with the candidates, helping us coordinate meetings. So I don't want to call it purely administrative, but to me, I think at that point, I'm, I feel like I have enough information, uh, from the, from the two that we saw. They both seem fairly fungible as far as, they both have broad networks, advertising experience.
To keep the documents secure too is another thing to think about. That's a very important part of this.
So, um, so my, my own view is that, um, I guess I'll, I'll just, I'll just jump out those out there for, for reaction. Uh, I, while I liked, um, the NASDAQ presentation, I do think building the relationship with MASCE, there's some value in that, in addition to, um, just the search. Uh, I think their qualifications seem equivalent. Um, I think that, um, that. I think, I, so I, I would lean towards engaging in ASC. It is, it's, it's cheaper too as well. Um, and I think you get some additional services. Uh, and it seemed like, you know, a hundred and one to be the hundred and one seems kind of, kind of, kind of interesting. So that's, that, I, I would be prepared to do that, but, um, and, and approve that, but want to get other views from the, like, neighbors.
I share your thoughts. I share, um, that I think that, um, both were qualified to do it. I did like, um, that's just the school association was better because I think the presentation was a little better. I also, you know, just going on Facebook, you know, they have, they get, this company has seven likes. Yeah, I just saying it's really not, it's just, that's one thing that I look at, like, is, is social media, is, is who's up on social media. So, I, and I think to your point, I, I think that both, both, again, I just think they have more resources because they're just around. Like, I know who they are. I've witnessed their, their, the way they operate, and it's pretty impressive, to be honest. Not to say that the other company isn't, but I, I am leaning towards, I feel the same way.
I think MASC was offering, um, a graphic designing, designer with their, in terms of their sort of structure within. And I think that that's an important piece because it's, it's sort of the handshake, the, the sort of visual handshake that we'll be giving to candidates. And that might seem small, but if you, if that's not part of what, um, the other organization does and things don't look as pretty, that does say something.
Yes.
Um, that there is power in that, whether it's true or not, it's there. Um, and, and I feel like they, that, this sort of industry seems so similar that.
Yeah. It's kind of like going with, um, you know, which, which of the three are going first.
Right. I think the only, the only challenge would be with MASC if this gentleman is, um, Mr. Harding is retiring, and then we have security, an unfortunate situation where a candidate is unsuccessful, that will be sort of picking up again with, um, someone, which maybe is a good thing, if, if, if we're in that situation, so.
Another, another point I will add, just for a quick review of the, um, the fee proposal from NASDAQ is that there were a lot of additional piecemeal fees that you did not find in the, um, in the MASC proposal. So even though the costs are, you know, eleven five versus thirteen five, I think the thirteen five probably flexes up as you, as you ask for more different services, which seemed like the MASC fees were more, more set. So.
I, 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 uh, so I would have just engaged MASC right now because I, I, I think they provide all the services we need. Um, my only reluctance in doing so is that, uh, or my only, I guess, apprehension, I should say, is that, um, I had spoken to Mrs. Mar, who is a select member and was, I think, I think my memory is sort of probably vice chair at the time that Dr. Sullivan was identified. And retained as our superintendent, and they had utilized the Collins Center. She was very happy with them. Um, and I just don't know, the problem though is that we just don't have the luxury of time here. Like, I don't, like, I'm, I'm like, looking at this, like, you know, it's bedtime. I'm like, we can't, I guess we could have an interim meeting and try and hear from that third group. We're gonna, we're gonna consider a third group. I think we have to do, I wish we could do, I wish I agree with Mr. Carr. We just get some, um, collateral from them, but I feel like that's not necessarily fair if we gave other people in-person opportunities. So we'd have to give them, um, sort of live opportunities. And, um, geez, I don't know. It's, so that I'm, I'm sort of like, I also know if I'm gonna be caring that, 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 that search committee, that I am laser focused and extremely attentive. Uh, I mean, Dr. Sullivan, the first person to tell you, I talked to him with my wife when I was chair of the school committee. So I, I, I don't, I'm not, I'll be, I'll be all over it. I, so I, I'm, I, I'd be really confident and comfortable with MASC. But I just don't know, like, is it, is it our obligation? Is, are, are we, like, isn't coming upon us to just look at the other agency that we went with last time?
I'll share mine.
I don't know. We got a good superintendent out of it.
I'll share, my, my thoughts on that are, uh, as follows. I think you can always look to the next organization, given where we are and, you know, knowing how you will run this thing. The marginal potential increase in quality between Collins Center and MASC is not to me worth the sacrifice in time that we will lose by waiting. So I'd, I'd rather have the two weeks than, you know, than, than, I mean, again, a lot of what, what we're gonna rely on them for is their network. Both are gonna have great networks and then organizational skills and, and helping, you know, the process through, which I think, you know, both are gonna be very highly qualified. I don't think we can go wrong. So given that, I, I do, I don't feel the need to look deeper. I don't object to looking deeper, but I do worry about falling off the, the timeline. We are trying to do this fairly quickly so that.
It's hugely important. We have to finish it along the lines of, because for the notice periods and it's just important.
It was interesting that the, uh.
Searches right now.
The MASC timeline was aligned with what we had put together.
Yes.
Almost, almost to the day. So that, that also was, was helpful, but, you know, and then he did say, after Mr. Kearney's question, that he can send the survey over tomorrow. So they're ready to go, which I like. So.
Celebrate. I appreciate.
I, 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 Craig, if you feel comfortable, you know, that if you want to reach out to the other group just to say, hey, these guys, like, if they blow you away, then if you think it's worth delaying, if you don't mind doing that.
I don't know that, I don't know that it is worth it. That's one, that's my, that's my, that's my, my sort of crisis I'm having here. I, I don't know that, I, I think I agree with Mr. Dial. The timing, I think, is more important than, because I agree, it, it, we just heard two, two presentations. They were very similar in terms of what, it, it's a process that has been sort of, there's a formula for it. I think, I think it's, it's more advantageous and beneficial for us and for the community that we serve to move, start moving, to start making decisions, to start moving forward here. That's what I think.
Any other thoughts? So, um, our next one is the superintendent job description, but I think the first two we can package together and bring those to, uh, to a vote. Um, what I would do first is see if, we, we have discussed on, as, as discussed, an eleven-person superintendent search committee. I will, for the good of the record, just remind everyone what the const- constitution would be. Um, we will have two teachers, um, one from elementary, one from middle high. Uh, our, the proposal would be two teachers, one from elementary, one from middle high, two principals, both again at this extremes, uh, one from the middle high, one from elementary, um, a student, preferably a junior, uh, two school committee members, which would be the chair and the vice chair, uh, three parents. The parent constitution would be, uh, ideally, but not bound, one from CPAC, one from elementary, one from middle high, and administration representative, and then, uh, Dr. Sullivan as a non-voting participant. Um, that's the proposal on the table. Uh, and if, and the rules of the committee would be a quorum, a quorum would exist if half the committee members are, are present, uh, and the charge would be to assist in identifying candidates and recommending, uh, a candidate for superintendent of schools.
Finest.
To the school, uh, finalists, to the, uh, to the school committee for approval and ultimate retention. So with that framework, I'll request, there's a motion to. So with that framework, I'll request, there's a motion to that effect, so. Motion made by Mr. Collin, or second, second by Mr. Carr. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so we have completed everything, next motion will be to appoint. Mr. Collin as Chair of that search committee. Motion to that effect.
Well, should we just, should we appoint the Chair and Vice Chair as the School Committee Representatives on the committee first?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes, that's okay, yeah, so that. Next, next would be to appoint the Chair of the School Committee and Vice Chair of the School Committee as the School Committee Representatives of, on the search committee. Mr. Carr, Ms. Lesky, all in favor? No opposed, okay, that has passed unanimously, and now the motion would be to make Mr. Chairman Craig Platt as the Chair of the committee. And I guess I would be the Vice Chair of that committee, so do I have a motion to that effect? Mr. Carr's made that motion. Second, Ms. Lesky, all in favor? Okay, so that administrative work is done. Then the next one would be, it sounded like we had fairly consistent of discussing the retention of Mas as our search consultant for the superintendent role. Do I have a motion to that effect? Motion made by Mr. Collin, second? Second by Mr. Carr, all in favor? All those, done, okay, so that motion carries unanimously, so Mr. Collin as Chair of the committee, if you wanna reach out to, I'm asking, cause those discussions. Great, okay, we're accomplishing a lot, although it is, I'm conscious of time, but we do have in front of us. A proposed job description, we'll move on to the, to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent job description. This one is important, so I know it's, we're extending past our normal school committee time, but I do think this is worth time well spent. Make sure we get people's input, just some history on where this came from. Mr. Collin and I had put this together, it has been reviewed by Dr. Sullivan as a straw man. This is not to anchor the committee in any way, we wanna get all of your feedback on this. Some of the driving factors in this is from our perspective, and I guess I should share my perspective. Is a relentless focus on academic achievement, putting students first. One of the things that we have with Dr. Sullivan is a great connection with the community. And so we wanted to make sure that theme was played through this job description. All throughout, we will see a number of references in this job description to communication skills. And so that was the, those were the focuses that we were trying to do, we also tried to recognize. We are in a district that has been transitioning and improving, and we wanna continue that improvement. And also that we have significant operational towns ahead of us, potential for, you know, new building projects and whatnot. So those themes are reflected through here, so that's, that's kind of the intro, Mr. Collin, anything you want to add?
Just, we did a credit place and emphasis on, on the, the actual communication skills of the. Of the candidate as well, I'm, you know, obviously our community, I think, appreciates excellent. Written verbal communication skills, and Dr. Sullivan possesses those. And he's, he's very refined in the way he presents any sort of messaging, down to like voice messaging. You know, how he puts us together, that's really deliberate, so I think the community is now going to expect that, and it's going to be. A really bad situation, if we get someone that does not have. Who are greater, that's possible communication skills of Dr. Sullivan. So we, we, you still see that, like, play out in different ways throughout this as well.
So with that, I'll open up the floor with any comments, questions, suggested revisions, thoughts?
This seems very complete to me. Attorney mentioned of understanding of metrics.
Yes. Let's see, it's the fourth bullet point under B, models for school personnel, the use of data to make well-informed decisions.
It's a few of them.
That, that's, that's one, I, which I stole from another job description. I thought it was particularly clever, because not only does it accomplish the leadership role, but it also shows that the data is important. So you're not only using data, you're also pushing that down to your, to your overall staff, which I think is a, is a, is a great way of describing it.
So that's where you came up with some of your red lines, huh?
Oh, I, I, yes, this is all, this is a lot of the.
I was wondering, these are.
Should the, should we present this as a draft to the committee and allow the committee to point to it? Or can we just decide the job?
I think we should decide, I think the job description should be described to the search committee by us.
And that, that ties back to the, the decision of who we hires ultimately in this committee's, this job description should reflect our committees.
I know, this is, let's, he had a, Ms. Lesky had a lot of, I, I'm, I'm eager to hear it, so I, I just, I, if you, I mean, you.
Well, I have some minutia, and then I have some sort of big picture things, so I'll start with the big picture things, and I can, I'm happy to just pass off my minutia.
Mr. Carr, am I bypassing you? I don't mean.
No, 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 no.
I, Ms. Lesky had mentioned it earlier, eager to hear.
Yeah, please.
And I think I mentioned this earlier in an earlier part of conversation, I think somewhere in here. I would include, or I would think about including a district description. Maybe after the position summary, something along the lines of Cohasset is a small coastal town located approximately twenty miles from Boston. I think that if this is a nationwide search, giving some color and clarity to where this wonderful little place is. What it's all about is what makes it special.
I can't help but smile at that comment, because we did have, in, I think in an earlier draft, we did have something in there. They are, they are present in, in a lot of the other ones. This document was just focused on the job, so Dr. Sullivan's reaction was, well, you don't have anything about the town, this is a great town.
Alright, there we go.
So this is not too, and my, my point back to him was, we don't need the committee to approve the description of the town. So this, this is really focusing our, the committee on what we, what our, what our job looks like. We will absolutely describe our town and, and what it is, because I think there's, in, in the ultimate search package.
Okay, so I guess I'm just envisioning how someone might come across the posting. And without necessarily getting the package from the district, that if you're looking on school spring, I would. I, I, and I don't know, because I haven't done that, when you're looking at school spring, will it have multiple documents that you can look at? Or, or is it just the job description? Because if it's just the job description, I think class, it's super special.
And I'm not wed to, I don't think what we're proving here is, this is the carbon copy piece of paper that has to go out. But there could be a section about our town, and then job description on the same piece of paper, it's just, really, it's the substance of the bullets that are.
And, and you know, if, as you've chosen MASC, they will put out a brochure. And the brochure will, will beautifully explain things about the town that I think you should craft with them.
But that's only for interested candidates, so to get people to actually apply, I think they need that piece of information.
I, we're all, I, I absolutely agree with you.
I would somehow incorporate more emphasis.
Would you be willing to write that?
Sure. Yes, I, I have a draft.
Great, so can you just, can you just email that to Lance and I, and then we'll just use that?
A little more emphasis on teaching and learning in terms of teaching craft and, and best practices. So I had a couple of places where I just thought it would be easy to add a few words, like under qualifications. Where it says proficiency and curriculum assessment, I would take out the word negotiations, because I think that's something different. And I would add school-based technologies and twentieth-first century teaching methods. Because the teachers are really important, and, and making sure that the teachers are continually growing and having access to professional development. Is part of what our current administration is doing really well and really focusing on. And then I would take that negotiation piece and pull it down to experience reflective and impact bargaining, semi, remove the semicolon and say, and contractual negotiations. I think you could also, under key duties and responsibilities. That first bullet point, if you want it all to be active verbs, you could say focuses unwaveringly or focuses relentlessly. Rather than a relentless focus, because that's the only bullet point that's starting with a now. And that's how, I mean, so we don't need to stay here all night.
Sorry to do that one, I'm sorry.
I know, but just under key duties and responsibilities. Most of the bullet points start with active verbs, except for the first one, so I'm just suggesting that you switch to focuses unwaveringly or focuses. Focuses relentlessly on and, and remove the semicolon.
Possesses a relentless focus.
Or possesses a relentless focus, yeah, just to create some consistency, but I think that fourth bullet point.
Can you just do relentlessly focus?
I hope this is not passed.
Right.
Yeah. And then I would just add another bullet point that says stays informed of best practices and, and new research as it relates to teaching and learning.
Stay to it.
Stays informed of best practices and new research as it relates to teaching and learning. Because that's talking about that sort of dynamic and robust approach to teaching and learning.
Yeah, it's great.
Do you want me to get to send it to you?
You can't, you can't send it to us.
Alright, alright, so now we all know that this is what I do to people's writing. Stays informed of best practices and new research as it relates to teaching and learning. The other one I would add in terms of that sort of developing, so sort of a more rigorous view of teaching and learning is. Section B, bullet point one, two, three, four, five. Between curricula and programs, I would include instructional methodologies. So that it would read, develops and recommends strategic objectives and plans for the district, including improvement. And evaluation of curricula, instructional methodologies, programs, budgets, and facilities. Under D, on the same topic, first bullet point, I would say foster, I would add the word, word learning. Continuous learning and robust student achievement and growth. To quantify what kind of student achievement and growth we're looking for, we're not looking for a modicum of student achievement and growth, but robust student achievement. In that same section, but not having to do with teaching and learning, promotes strong and positive relationships. With and among all staff, because I think having a cohesive staff is as important as having good individual relationships with your staff. And in that same personnel and staffing, some sort of language, and I don't know what that language is exactly. Around diversity, equity, and inclusion, around the hiring of, and being. And maybe it's around the hiring practices, I believe there's a, a bullet point to that, to that. Issue, but that not only are hiring processes fair.
We have, and Dr. Sullivan, I don't think, we have in our, one of our policies. We have some language on promoting a diverse and, a diverse and inclusive staffing environment. I won't, is that, I'd love to just take, put that language in here.
Yeah, and not only that, but the new evaluation of, of superintendents, it is. Filled with cultural responsive. In terms of being inclusive, right, that's like an important thing, so I, I think hiring inclusive.
How, how about something that effectively promotes a, a culture responsive, diverse and inclusive environment?
Yes.
Because that's exactly what the new evaluation tool I'm looking for.
Yes, I think two.
Where do we put that?
Last bullet under D?
D?
Or perhaps in, a bullet three and D?
Because this isn't just, it's not gonna be just about staff, right, personnel, it's the entire school district.
So let's, let's get the words down on the multiple.
I thought you just said the words.
I know what I've forgotten about, that was perfect. Effectively promotes an environment. A culturally responsive environment.
Culturally responsive and diverse environment?
Yep, responsive.
Diverse and inclusive.
Diverse and inclusive environment.
I think too, like thinking as a candidate reading this, it's not only what we wanna see, but what does, what are we telling the candidates about who we are? And I think some of this is sending an explicit or implicit message to candidates that. That this is already an inclusive place that has sort of evolved methods for working with people. Of all different walks of life, and I think if there's a way to get that in there, whether it's, I don't know. Should know this, does Cohasset have a diversity statement, or statement on diversity, or something along those lines?
Definition of equity.
Excuse me?
Definition of equity.
The definition of equity, that, that those are signals to people that this is a place, particularly if you are of a diverse personage. Personage, that this would be a place that you might wanna work.
So, and I think that those are all great reasons to make sure we include, include this, I guess the question would be location, do we put that under? First, I, I, cause I, I, I agree with. It goes beyond, it goes beyond personnel and staffing, I think this is more of an, almost the administrative leadership, so B seems like a good place. For that, and in fact, that, that, you know, it brings it higher on the importance list.
And maybe it goes in B and C to sort of do that signaling that I'm trying to explain that I'm looking for. To diverse candidates, that they are looking at this saying, do these people, does this district know? You know, are they aware of best practices in cultural competency, et cetera?
So on the, on the second one, you mean, school committee, community relations, or personnel stat, between C or D?
I, I think it can go in B and in D.
And in D, okay, so I, cause I'll see, see, I was like, cause C is, C is going the other way, so what would you say for D?
I think D would just be the inclusion of, say, on point three, employees well-developed hiring practice. Practices that comply with applicable state and federal laws, as well as. Principles of inclusion. To.
Well-developed and inclusive hiring practices.
Yes. Then I just was wondering about the word choice around selection criteria. I think that these are more like competencies or. They're not qualifications, but are those really the criteria upon which someone is selected, and that's.
So I'll, I'll.
Tell me more on this.
Craig did all this, so I'm kidding. So the, the idea for these six bullets, and honestly, don't necessarily need them. But they're more guideposts for us and our, our search committee and the candidates on what we think is really important. So you'll see communication skills is, is in there, it's the last bullet. Fiscal management skills, motivation to sports leadership team and cultivating working relationships, so these are just. In fact, you can either, you can take away all the key duties and responsibilities and just have the selection criteria, but this is just kind of trying to highlight the areas that. In our conversations with Dr. Sullivan and just in our, our time on this committee that we've seen that Dr. Sullivan has done really well. And we wanna make sure we, we are considering those strengths as we, as we select, as we, as we make a selection. So it's a little bit different than a responsibility, and it's a little bit different than a qualification, but it's the, the dimensions on which we're gonna look at, at the candidate, there may be many others. But these are ones that we wanted to highlight as important.
Maybe you could put key selection criteria?
Yeah, it just, when I read it, it read, I, I just, it didn't, key helps with that, because it's sort of saying highlighting.
Right.
Do you like me to go on?
Yes, please. This is great.
This is exactly what we're supposed to be doing right now.
Okay. Under qualifications, so these are all just like little things, successful administrative leadership experience professionally. Preferably in, and I think it needs to be in an educational setting rather than an education setting, setting.
That was also great.
It was, and I actually struggled with education versus education.
I looked it up.
I didn't catch it either.
And I went with education.
I think it's used interchangeably.
Alright, well.
I think because it's not.
Education.
Because it's more broadly educational, that you would take someone from.
Listen, you don't, I, I was, I was struggling, so.
Sorry, I think in that next bullet point, you could add proven ability to constructively and proactively engage. Because I think proactive communication is something that is always appreciated.
Where, where are we?
I got it. That fourth bullet, qualifications.
Oh, proven ability to.
Constructively and proactively.
Under key duties and responsibilities, bullet point four, under A. I believe you need to add the word two, so establishing and utilizes effective assessment practices to measure student. Assessment practices to measure student academic growth and. To inform data centric decision making, so that you have the sort of construction of to do this and to do that.
To measure student, or data sticker. Okay, so adding the two between practices and measure, yep.
Uh, just a question on the next page, the third bullet point down, which is part of A. Um. Do we actually create new curricula or do we just implement? Or do we use the word evaluate and or implement new curricula?
Be creative.
Are, you do some.
Created the reading.
Right, okay.
It was like, it was like a hybrid solution.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Um, in bullet point, the final bullet point there. Um, I think you can get rid of the word as. So you would read, uh, regularly visits all school buildings with relevant district staff to observe classroom activity and identify areas for academic. Uh. And instructional growth and or replicate exhibited, and I would just add successes. For plural. Um. And then finally, two more.
I don't like the successes thing.
Okay.
But are you saying and/or though, or did you just read it that way? Do you want and/or, and/or? Yeah, you're right, and/or. Right, exhibit success, okay. Sorry, continue.
Yes, um, okay, um. In B, where we have overseas compliance with laws, it's the third bullet point. Um. And recommends to the CSE any changes to district policies that will promote the delivery. Of the highest quality educational experience. Um. The final bullet in B, um, I think athletic needs to be athletics.
Yes.
Okay, um. Does it make sense to add in section C, the final bullet point? Um. Business partners, nonprofits, neighboring school districts, I'm thinking of PSO, CEF, CSC. Um, not school committee, but CSCR, um.
What a nonprofit, so I got.
Fair, that's it.
Thank you.
That was awesome.
Sorry.
I know, this was, this is great, and honestly, I'll, I'll say that for, for many of these. It shows the power of just adding a word can, can really reinforce the meeting. So I appreciate all the, all the changes.
Um, that's, that's, that's really great. Mr. Kenny, did you have any specific correction?
Um, well, just kind of like, um, that was awesome. Yeah, sorry. Thank you for that.
No, no.
Well, I, I wouldn't do that, that was a wrong thought. Um, one of the things that, that stands out to me is, um.
Just.
Closely monitored is facets of the district already included, but not limited to academic extracurricular, could we put in arts and clubs there? Um, I don't know what extracurricular.
That is extracurricular.
That would be arts and clubs.
Well, arts would be included in, in my opinion, in academic. Extracurricular would be the clubs.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, actually, that's another word.
Okay.
Because art, art is actually part of the.
Okay, and then, um, the, um, the other thing is, um. What is the review process of coaches in the arts program? I would definitely want them to meet with the athletics director and, um, have a review process of all the coaches. I think that hasn't been done in this district in fifteen years and it needs to be done.
So, I think that's, would be the big end of this bullet.
Which one?
That right here closely monitors all facets that are including athletics.
So that creates that obligation, Paul, and then as a committee, we then have the ability to. Ask them to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So that would be one of the things in it.
Right, so like, for example, like, like you, you want, um, uh, you want to, um, miss Owen to have the, the grounds looking better, right? And Dr. Sullivan, we wouldn't put that in the job description, but that's their, their maintaining operations over, you know, facilities or security or whatever, you know, like, uh. And so that gives you the ability to request that.
Okay. Okay, the other, the other one would be, uh. Um, I guess it's already kind of here, would be meeting with the parents, like a parents advisory committee to try to instruct them to start a parents advisory committee. Cause I think we have a student voice, we'll be on the parents.
So we, we have, we have that a few places is, um, the last one willingness to seek and accept the back of stakeholder selling proof there is.
Okay.
Actively identifies, actively identifies additional ways in which stakeholder input and feedback can be obtained and considered. Okay, so there you go.
Yeah, yeah, and, and Miss Kenny, you're absolutely right, that's critical. Skill that we need to have in our, in our, in our. Uh, Mr. Carr, anything from you, it's great. As we're calling, anything from you?
No, Miss, Miss Lesky, um, Miss Lesky changed all my stuff.
This is why we're.
For the better.
We didn't say incredibly impressive.
So, um. I would like to see if we could, um, vote on this. We have a lot of changes. I have them here. Uh, we did just hear them and we accepted them all. I guess I'll ask the committee, would you like me to go through the job description amendments, um, here, or do we want to just take them as read? And I can circulate a revised draft after we've approved it. So I want to see that the edits that we discussed here in the meeting have been incorporated as approved. That's what I got. So.
So moved.
So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the job description as presented to the committee as amended by discussion, in particular, Miss Lesky's excellent comments and the part of the motion.
So moved.
So moved by, by Mr. McCollum?
I'll second, thank you.
Seconded by. All in favor?
Hi.
Aye. All opposed? All right, the, the job description is in there. And then one of the things is that we will ensure that there is a, this is accompanied by a Selva, the Selvatown paragraph that, uh, that you've, you've sketched out. So I think that's part of it. Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes, hold on.
Before, I'm sorry.
I just want to see where we are on the.
We're, we're at the last bullet. Of the superintendent.
I've lost mine, that's okay, on the super, okay, so yes. Before we move on to search, off, search, superintendence search process.
Can we just?
Yes.
We've got openly the timeline here.
Yes.
For a moment. This is an anticipated timeline that, uh. We developed and, um. I, 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 I did this primarily because I, I, I have a lot of anxiety about getting this information, like getting a general concept of, of. Helping to manage the community's expectations in terms of where this process is going, how long it's going to take, what the steps are going to be, because like people are submitting emails, people I think are anxious about being able to give input. Um, understanding how the, how quickly the process is. So. This was drafted so that we could now, I mean. There may be instances in which we have to depart from this, but I, I think that this was especially looking at the, like you just said, uh, not, not too long ago to dial, looking at the mask. Timeline that they had on the last page, this is very similar, we just actually independently came to like almost the same exact dates in terms of the closing of the process. So I wanted to just note at the meeting that, um, you know, as of today, it had us voting to. You know, in the composition, partial composition of the, of the search committee on whether to potential vote on partnering with search agency, we actually voted on doing that. Uh, finalizing the job, job posting, we did that. Um, voting to create a webpage within the district for the superintendent search, I think that that's something that probably the. We don't need to vote it, I think that the, it, as long as the committee, I think the search committee can probably. So we'll take that, that's going to be a, a, a link that, that's going to be somewhere where it's, that's sort of, um. One stop shop is what I'm envisioning where the community can go to see where we're at in terms of what we're doing, and we can also post messaging from the search committee will deliver. Um, community messaging regularly to update folks on where we're at.
And I apologize there, because that would actually be a place, and Miss Lesky, Mr. Carr, I don't know if you're willing and able, but that might be a place to engage the communications subcommittee. Is that website creation, could be something you're interested in, in helping out?
I have no idea how to do it, but.
But you do know how to communicate.
I can, yeah.
So text, but not the, the creation of.
Not, not the actual website design, I guess, so we'd have to work with you guys on.
Figuring out how we go about doing it, and then, yeah, and then, and then I guess, um.
I wonder if Justin Schreer.
Justin, Justin Schreer would be a.
Oh, he could definitely.
He'd be the, he'd be the first stop.
It'd be, it'd be great.
I'm just identifying the action steps and sort of getting that done, and then, yeah, we're gonna have to populate it with content and figure out how we'll do that. Um, so anyway, so for, for everyone who's watching or will watch the recording, um, or who may not, I don't know, I mean, I, I also. I, I. I don't know, do we, um. Do we publish this with the understanding that it's, you know, a, a, a basically anticipated timeline that we're going to try to adhere to, but it's not, you know, written in stone, so people have a general concept? Or Dr. Sullivan looks like he has a, some input.
Just a thought, I, I, you just might want to get the consult of MASC.
Ah.
But that's where I was going.
Good, good point.
I mean, I think it's a very.
No, we don't.
See right now, there's, you're looking at this timeline, if there's any reaction from the committee. And what we would do is use this as a model for, you know, if, if you'd like, as the, um, chairman of the search committee. Use this as a model for the MASC development timeline.
Great, great, yeah. Has anyone, yeah, so did anyone have any suggestions about this or any comments or anything like that? Yeah.
Does it avoid all, uh, like? Vacation needs and things like that?
It, it include, it encompasses them, I mean, there's so, you'll see, Mr. Carr, like, certain. Like, so February, the February break is included in that. Right, in that, in that, 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 that like large, larger, um, time period on the second page.
Yeah.
And so during that time. There's a little bit less to do.
Okay.
Um, but. You know, it, it was more based, so this, what this was, was a timeline that was developed. You know, basically from where we are now, what we've done. And then trying to accomplish it before the end of April.
Okay.
So that's what I was trying to do.
Specifically for the April break.
Right. Right, so by the time we're on April vacation, we will have signed a contract with the new superintendent.
And it's an aggressive timeline, but, uh, I'd rather have an aggressive timeline and be a week late than have a non-aggressive timeline and be weeks late on that.
Because if there's a sixty day notice requirement for a superintendent.
Sixteen to ninety of the time.
Have you given notice yet? I don't recall having received your notice.
I actually have not. What do you talk about that?
I'm not going to accept it.
I will.
Sign a contract with Matt Sullivan. Um, but so. This would, well, it's, it would be impossible to finish before April, but this would at least allow us to be done and have them give notice. May, June, that's obviously sixty days, right? So, so that is what it's sort of designed to do. And, and to give everyone an idea, that that's what we're looking to do, is have this done by April break.
Okay.
Um, so does anyone have, but in looking at the, the bullets and the action items, did anyone have any sort of concerns or anything like that, or questions or suggestions or anything like that? I don't know, Mr. Here, so do we, so do, so, okay, so you're right, so, so what you're saying is. I should get the input from mask, get the committee together, and then have the committee decide on this, then we can publish it that way, maybe in one of our first.
I, I think what's, yeah, and we can talk about, I think what you've got the input for mask, maybe you could be circulated here, but we can post it. This, this is not a, I don't, I don't think this is a, a thing that needs to be going on.
No, no. Could be a handy thing for the, before anybody gone here for the committee, so they know, they understand.
Fair.
You know, because it's going to be really a few of eleven, twelve people, it's going to be hard to get those dates.
That's a great, that's a great point, so we assume.
That's why he's a non-voting member.
Maybe we can. Maybe we consult with mask and then sort of finalize it and then send that out to the community in requesting letters of interest from parent, from families.
It's, it's fair, right? Cause you don't want to pop into the committee and then someone says.
Does everyone think that?
I think that's great.
The, the only, if, if, if we can't get it finalized in a couple of days, though, I would not be opposed to sending out the request for letters of intent. Um, and then following up with the calendar later, and the people are like, I can't do it, but if people are interested, I, I wouldn't want to discourage them, or I wouldn't want to wait to cover that, but let's see if we can wait this thing. Finalized.
By the way, thank you for all this work.
We're all, we're all participating, so, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Crazy.
Um. Great, so, um. Anything else on the timeline?
No, sorry, I just wanted, I have anxiety about letting everyone know what this is, I, I would, if I wasn't going to know, I'd be like, what's going on? So I just want, that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Great, so, um. So, yeah, uh, so, Miss Lesky, Mr. Carr, as the, you can help us with the, um, the, the website communications. Uh, Mr. Collins, you are unleashed on your, your role as search committee. Um, uh, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Collins, the areas where we'll need your assistance on is, is soliciting the teachers, the body of teachers and students. For members, members in the committee, and then thoughts on principal representation. So, uh, which I know we've talked about it, and, and, yeah, but that's all that we'll need in the, uh, you know, by the next meeting. I'm just trying to get my head to the tasks now. Um, anything else I'm missing?
Oh, just who, who is doing the call for, um. Uh, letters of interest. To the general public.
Yes.
So you are.
I'll do it. And they'll have to be directed to, um, I'll do it so you don't have to deal with that, that's the point of me having chair as you're doing this, and then I'll have it directed to you, though, because it has to go, we have to.
Yep. Um. So if you have any input on what that should look like, Greg will be. And, and rolling. Um, okay. Anything else? You sure? Now this is your last chance. Okay. Um, all right, with that, we'll close off our superintendent search committee agenda item, that was brief. Um. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I don't believe we have any minutes to.
Minutes for the next meeting.
Um, and Mr. Klein, I'll, I'll, I'll circle up with you on minutes, um, because I, when I, when I was looking for other districts, other districts. I looked at some of the stuff that they have due on minutes, and we might be able to simplify our minutes a bit if we, uh, if I choose, so.
Okay.
Just, just something we can, um, we can think about, uh, if, if it makes it more efficient.
Yeah, it's, Kathy's got it going on, you know, like it's just, it's me, I, I like to go through them before I give them to you guys, and. Um, I'll have them for the next meeting.
And that was not a failed criticism, I literally wanted to positively off of that because I saw the minutes, like, oh, these are good ideas. So. Um. So on future agenda items, I had a couple, uh, one is, um, uh, having our new chef come, uh, visit. Uh, I do think we'll, I'll reach out with, uh, that may not be this, but, uh, to Mr. Earls, to see if we have either an agenda item here or a joint meeting of the two committees to see how we work together better. Uh, and then, um, Mr. Kenny, you had suggested Officer Taylor come in to talk about initiatives on, um, Safe Harbor, so those are things to.
Yeah, oh.
Think about.
I do.
Dear Hill?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
I do have one other suggestion.
Future agenda?
Yeah, just because on the seventeenth, we're going to meet with the wellness committee. And to be honest with you, we haven't really had a lot of teacher participation.
All right.
Um, so Dr. Sullivan, if you could send out a letter saying that, you know, looking for, if you're on the committee, show up at the meeting, if you don't, get off the committee, basically.
So we have, we, um, we should have additional teachers, part of the problem, yeah, some of them are coaches.
Yeah, but don't get off, you know, I mean.
Let's take that offline.
You know, and, and, and I, I, I also would suggest maybe we have, um, on the sep, maybe we can make it, uh, uh, after the seventeen, till we can discuss. How the, how the wellness committee is going. It's, um, as much as work that you do, I just want to make sure that, because we're only meeting four times a year, and there's a lot of wellness that needs to be talked about. I don't feel like that, that we're talking enough about wellness, that, that the school, the kids are all mentioning that they want wellness days, that's something super important, that, that the, uh, Safe Harbor has mentioned. So those are the things that I'd like to get a collaborative thoughts on the seventeenth, so after we have our committee meeting. That they know, too, the people that participate know that we're going to be addressing this at the school committee level after, if that's okay with you.
It's, and Mr. Kenny, what I would, what I would advise is that, um, that presentation could be included in the standing agenda item on reports from liaisons. And so that's something that you already have the floor to do in our, in our standard, um, okay, so. Uh, that would be a valid report from liaisons. So, uh, one of the future agenda items to discuss, uh, we have the ability to host our next school committee meeting at Deer Hill.
Perfect.
Uh, in the learning comments.
It's the, um, the Susan B. McNamara Innovation.
Yes, so if the committee's interested, we don't need to vote on it, but if it's interested, we will have the, uh, have the next meeting at the Deer Hill Innovation Center.
Innovation.
Innovation Commons, okay, so, um, well, let's make sure we, uh, we implement.
We have the same technology and it's actually.
It's actually nicer.
Yeah. I will say, though, that coming off of Charlie's comments, the temperature tonight has been lovely.
It, it, it came down, it did, it was very warm and when I got here.
But it isn't also very cold.
And it's, it's, I, I mean, this is the first meeting I've gone through, the entire meeting where I haven't at some point been uncomfortable, temperature.
It, it has been a noted, uh, improved, it's, the, fixing the switch is definitely updated.
So that, that was.
Fixed completely.
Yeah, and it's. We, we did have on here a, uh, agenda item to go into executive session. Um, that has become, um, moot by virtue of a, uh, what, it's not stay, I call it stay, they don't go to.
Abeyance. It's an abeyance.
An advance, so, um, the, the issue at hand is under further discussion. An advance. So, um, the, the issue at, at hand is under further discussion, uh, at the administration level. So it does not need, um, uh, school committee attention at this point. So we are going to pass the rejected session and all it leaves us with is adjourned.
One thing on future topics, just as a reminder, we had discussed scheduling something in the spring, just because it takes time.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Uh, and then we did that last year and that was, uh, that was an excellent, excellent presentation.
But which was even more excellent is the, like, the then and now Metco recent discussion that we had.
So I think, I think we'd be interested to see what the committee would like Metco to present on. That would be, uh, of interest too. I know, um, Ms. Keating's call and, uh.
Yeah, two separate things though, right? One is going there. What, what, Mr. Carr, what are you talking about?
Going there.
Yes. The second is a Metco-based presentation that, I mean, today it was one of the most engaging ones I've been a part of. It was incredible. Um, so I want, I think we just do the same thing.
But I'll, I'll share, my, I, I read us to do that because that was such a good presentation. I don't want to just do the same thing again. I feel like we should have so I, I wanted to just leave you that there's another angle that we can make sure we don't, because we just cover the same stuff and it's just the same thing. I'd, I'd like to continue the, the depth.
Will be different students, so it's different. So to me, the driving, sure, I, it doesn't, to me, the driving, uh, sort of the, the impetus behind it is to get student perspective from our Metco students about the programming and how we could improve and what and where we're, we're realizing some level of success.
February 28th is when we had the pencil then for a spotlight, whether that was.
Right, that's spotlight and learn.
Yeah.
So let's, we'll, we'll, it's a great suggestion. We'll keep that on there. I think that was on the radar. We'll, we'll keep those on. I think honestly, this stuff is.
Yeah, it is. I didn't mean to hijack it. It was just, I just didn't want one to be thought of. They're two separate things.
I mean, you could do, if we, if we, you could do that in Boston.
And then they're up staying late.
Yes.
The Metco, ooh, that's really, that's, that would be great. Really insightful.
Those dark skies. I just have a lot of boys.
That's a good team.
It's a really good idea.
So, yeah, let's, let's.
They can be home.
Let's look into that.
I have to see if that dates a bill. I can look in that tomorrow.
Yeah, we do.
Let's, let's have a look into that.
That our students aren't staying. That's awesome.
Should mention, um, just quickly, because I did my updates, but Mom of King Day this Monday, we do have a wonderful Mom of King breakfast that happens in our community. I'm not sure which, uh, it's in my newsletter, which, um, convocational gathering place it's in, but, uh, that's just something to. It's usually at, um.
It, it goes back into our home.
St. Stevens and. Yeah, it's right across the street from St. Stevens. Yes. We hit the lots of works. You know what I'm talking about?
Additional presentation.
It is at the First Parish Unitarian Universal, Universalist Parish House.
First Parish Universal.
First Parish Unitarian Universalist Parish House. I'll make sure I get it all right. And, um, and that is nine AM, nine to 11:00. And Deshaun Washington, Massachusetts, won a 24 Teacher of the Year from Lexington.
Oh, that's.
And he's the first black male educator to receive the honor. So he's going to, um, be sharing how Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s message influencing day-to-day work, so.
And we are doing things throughout the district now. I just want to sign up for this.
So it's, you can, I think you just show up, right? She just said it's five dollars per person or fifteen per family.
It's a wonderful event. I brought my oldest son to it for the last.
Yeah, usually the students help cook or the teacher, it helps. So it's just a really.
Sorry to interrupt that. I just thought that was important and I totally missed that in my updates.
No worries.
I forgot something too. Kindergarten registration is open, as is preschool. That's, that's why I was doing what I was talking about preschool, but then I got excited about.
Kindergarten, we want to make sure we, we send out to the community.
We have it up there.
We're down to five people and I think the five people are all us, so.
Principal Farrell sent it out too.
Yeah.
She did. It went out. It's been in the newsletters.
We have a way to make sure.
Goes to the preschools.
Do we have a way to, that we make sure that that goes to people who aren't in our schools yet?
Yeah.
We talked about that before.
It does. It goes to the, uh, preschools in town. So those private preschools, it's also, it's on our websites, on the newsletter, so, yeah.
Okay. Um, unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to.
Move me adjourned.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Second, made by Mr. Carr, second by Mr. McCollum. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good job.